Welcome, everyone. This is our 1:00 PM, June 25 special meeting. I want to introduce myself. I'm Anna Marie Pavlik Rosen, Chair of the Board. To my right, Wald Balgman, our Vice Chair; Dawn Hale, Treasurer Secretary; member Ralph Ludwig; member Steve Mason; our Attorney, James Liebman; and we also have Diane Schneider, our Human Resources Person, sitting next to James Liebman. Our first item of business is a teleconference with John Tedesco of Tedesco &amp; Associates talking about the candidate specifications. John, would you like to go ahead and take over?
Yes, thanks, Anna Marie. Good afternoon, everyone. Hope everyone's had a nice weekend and hope everything is looking sunny in Frankfurt.
It's raining.
Appreciate the opportunity to connect today. So, really, the purpose of the conversation today, and I just want to make sure, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
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 Okay, okay, great. So, the purpose of today's meeting is to really, is to talk about the GM executive recruitment and make sure that we're in alignment as best possible as we move the search forward. You know, I've been at this for 24 years and I find that a better search always occurs when there's good communication up front, transparency through the search process, and just a clear sense, or somewhat clear sense of direction from the start. Now, you know, I'm flexible, my team is flexible. We know sometimes that searches go in different directions, but, you know, it definitely helps to have some sort of thoughtful, organized unification from the start. So, with that said, what we, a couple of things that we put together to kind of frame out our search process are the position specification document. And that's something that kind of serves two purposes. One, it keeps me and my team on task, but two, it's a, and it kind of shapes out the search strategy in a sense. But second, it's also the document that we share with prospective candidates, both those who we might be networking with and those who have expressed an interest in the opportunity. We typically like to include our client's logo on the document. I think it helps create, you know, we're about partnership, we're all on the same side of the table, and so we like to communicate with our clients that, and into the marketplace that, you know, who our client is, and we're very proud about that. So, I hope it's okay to use the logo. Ninety-nine out of 100 clients say yes, it is. Every once in a while, we get one that isn't, so I just want to make sure, first and foremost, from a branding standpoint, that that's okay with you all.
Diane?
Maybe Diane has the perspective on that, too.
Diane, do you have a comment on that?
No, I mean, thanks.
Okay, so Diane's in agreement.
Okay, fantastic. So, that's the, that's the position spec document. And then, what I'd love to do is go through how we put that together, what's included there, what isn't included there. And then, the second document, we call the candidate checklist. And, you know, I put this together over the weekend, and I need my administrative assistant to do editing. I noticed that, at least on my copy, when I went to print it this morning, it showed the comments from a prior search engagement. You know, we typically have a template. So, I don't know if it printed that way, or if you were able to remove it on your end, but I just want to say disregard the comment about location. You'll see, does it show on your end with that comment?
Um...
Willing to relocate?
Hmm.
Yeah, on the, willing to relocate to the Frankfurt area. On my copy, maybe it just printed this way on my end, it has a comment from a prior search, so I just wanted you to disregard that.
I think ours is fine.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, I, that's what happens when I do work over the weekend and I don't have my administrative assistant to fine tune things. But anyway, these are both draft documents. They're both open to edits and suggestions from all of you. Again, you know, our philosophy is we want to go forward with the search process in conjunction with the Board's needs and making sure that we're representing your interests as we move forward. We don't have a, you know, we don't have any sort of a different agenda. We're here to best serve you. And so, I would say, in that checklist document, basically, it's one of our assessment resources. We take the job description and we, the position spec, and we work it into a list of attributes and questions that helps us, you know, so we're not just looking at how a candidate presents themselves on their resume, but we're really looking at apples-to-apples comparisons of candidates, how they measure up on key criteria that are important, that we know go into a high caliber leader, and that are elements that are important consideration of qualifications for candidates for the Frankfurt Plant Board. And so, and this is also data that we can chart and graph as we present it. We will typically present this information along with the candidate's resume. And again, it just makes a nice added piece of information to present on a candidate, an additional data point.
Okay. Board members?
Any questions so far on what I said?
So, so far, so good. Sounds acceptable to us.
Excellent, excellent. All right, so I'm gonna, I'll turn it over to the position spec. You know, typically, what we, we just kind of have a basic frame. This is a boilerplate under where we talk about the engagement. This is something that's been tested over the years and, and we, it's kind of our hook, essentially. We want to hook in candidates, but we don't want to give too much information away in the first paragraph. We want to entice them to kind of read more. But it basically establishes the purpose of the document, it establishes the purpose of the recruitment, it talks about who our client is and who we are, you know, just a, you know, it's, again, we look at this as, this is really about our client. So, you'll notice the "about us" part is just two sentences long and it's just fine that it doesn't, generally, don't, again, we want this to be about our clients, not about us. So, that's the engagement section. The client overview section, I took information that we found on the, on your website and some public documents, and also listening to some videos to kind of craft this section. I want to make sure, I had some differing data from a few of you, so I want to see, maybe Diane has an accurate number of what the total number of employees are. And again, it's an approximate number, it's always a moving target, but I want to make sure we've got a number there that you're all comfortable that we're utilizing.
I mean, I think approximately 225 employees is fine. It's probably a little less than that currently.
Okay. Okay. And then, so you'll see the paragraph there, you know, I don't, I was looking for data for, on job descriptions, that's typically where we find kind of our client overview. We'd like that client overview section to match the branding that our clients utilize on their position descriptions, or who they utilize on their "about us" section of their website. There wasn't a cohesive paragraph that I could find. So, again, Diane, if you or any of the Board members have a paragraph that you'd like us to use, or anything you'd like us to say there, I will completely defer to whatever verbiage you all would like in that section.
Was there anything that you all noticed that you felt like that was specifically mentioned, or not mentioned, that needed to be included?
It looks good to me.
So far, we'd accept it. Would you add anything, Ralph?
Well, I think, you know, for someone who's not familiar with the organization, has done a really good job of summarizing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question on that first, on the first paragraph.
Well, this is always, oh, sorry, go ahead.
On the first paragraph?
The engagement?
Yeah, under the engagement, the third line or sentence, you have, "FPB is seeking a talented and visionary executive and a change agent." I really don't like that, "and a change agent." I'd like that to be struck.
Is there anything you'd all like to discuss, or else we'll just make that deletion?
I don't think I'm on board of changing that.
Dawn, could you say, saying that in a different way that would be more acceptable to you?
I don't know. You'd have to tell me how you want to say it in a different way.
I think the key point to get...
Maybe I could add some context about that. So, typically, what we talked about with a change agent is, you know, it doesn't mean somebody's gonna need to, you know, shake the trees and disrupt an organization, but it's somebody that is skilled and thoughtful in their approach and how they go about change. A change agent isn't somebody that, like I say, disruptive, but a true definition of a talented change agent is somebody who can improve an organization's position, but do so in a thoughtful, thoughtful way, and generally, it's a non-disruptive way.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, in my thought, you know, we have a lot of changes coming up in front of us, so there are going to be a lot of dynamics. We've got new power supply, we've got new broadband technologies, there's, the industry itself is changing a great deal. So, that concept of change agent, I think, is very appropriate for, you know, the changes in the industry and also the changes of our agency as we move forward.
But I don't see adding fiber or changing our power supply as changing the organization per se. And when this is talking about the Frankfurt Plant Board, if there's going to be something about a change agent, I think it needs to be couched in much gentler terms than what this is, possibly some of what you said about, you know, thoughtful, et cetera, but just flat out like it is. I don't think that represents, at least what I'm looking for in a, in a GM.
Okay, and we have a comment from a member, Steve Mason.
Yes, how you doing? Hello. I guess what I need to understand is, in what context are you using the word "change agent"? Is it, as it relates to initiatives that the plant board may undertake? Are you talking about, as it relates to the organization and management role that this person would undertake?
Mm-hmm. That's a great delineation, you know, and was it Dawn? Was that Dawn speaking earlier?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to learn everybody's voices. You know, to that point, I, you know, we could easily put this information in, back further into the document, talk about it. And it's also something that we could talk about from a soft level with candidates, you know, we, in our search approach, we don't put everything in this document. There's plenty that we would talk about, kind of, what I call the in-between-the-line assessment of what the role entails, and so, you know, we can talk about that the organization's going through a lot of change, and some of those key initiatives that are underway, and I do talk about those things in the document. And we could talk about how the organization, you know, would benefit from a thoughtful change leader, somebody who is well-skilled at taking an organization forward, has the visionary skills, and can do so, you know, in a way that moves the organization and the board along with them, as opposed to, you know, the opposite being kind of an alienation or disruptiveness. So, that's something we can talk about. Again, we could put, and I think it is farther down in the document as well.
Maybe what would work at this point is if we go through the whole thing and come back to that area.
Before we move on...
I put an, I'll sorry, go ahead.
Just one more comment I would make about it is that, it also seems that that's an attractant for candidates that would want to move into an agency that offers a lot of opportunity for growth and change, and, you know, I think, you know, incorporating, you know, that, those concepts in there is important to help us attract, you know, viable candidates.
And I'll, I'll agree with that statement. That's what, generally, why we put that in the, in that first paragraph, you know. What we find that candidates generally aren't attracted to is that they're asked to go into a situation that is just kind of going along, pushing the same old buttons. And so, that's kind of part of that phrase as well, just what you hit on.
Okay. Well, let's move on, and then we can come back to resolving that, maybe more after we go through the rest.
Okay, and I put a star, I'll put a star by all the things that we talk about. So, it sounds like everybody was okay with the client overview section, that first paragraph with client overview, but I, again, I welcome any, any feedback. And that's typically one where we ask the client to provide us with a paragraph if we haven't hit the mark there, because we want to make sure that we represent you, you as accurately as possible. Anyway, I think there's a lot of great data there. The next paragraph, "Agency Financials," is a public agency. I know you, you were very much about transparency, which mirrors our approach. I put data in here that I found off of, off of the budget. There was a video where I gathered a lot of this, and I know there was some information, a document that was shared with our firm as well. So, I think there's tremendous positive information there for attracting candidates, just in terms of the financial health of the organization. But how does everybody resonate with that paragraph?
I'm good.
Okay, yep. Okay, we have agreement on that. Paragraph?
Okay, excellent. And I'll just, before I jump into the next section, just one other thing I'd like to say about our position specification document is that I find in, for roles like this, we tend to make them a little longer than shorter, and it demonstrates a couple of things. It demonstrates how important the recruitment is, that it's just not a one-page, you know, job description. It's, it's a seven-page document. It shows candidates that there's, that this is an important role, it shows candidates that this is important recruitment for the organization, and, anyway, so I'd just like to kind of point that out as well. All right, the personnel and culture. I could use some help here. We could use some help here. Again, I'm trying to gather public information on this information, and some information through the checklist, pre-questions, that the questions we sent to the Board, through some of the responses, there's, there's data here that was generated from those questions. So, I appreciate the information that was shared with us. I thought, and I, let's see, I'm looking at, like, the documents about, you know, again, about being transparent. A number of the staff have taken retirement recently, active initiatives ongoing to attract and retain a talented workforce, but, you know, 28% of staff have been there under two years, but the average tenure of staff, all staff is 11 years. I think that's a really good statement. Average tenure of senior staff is 19 years, and 76 of the 225 with 15 more years of service, that's, I frankly think that's, that's exceptional in this arena, so. But what I've written there about the leadership team is collegial, has great respect for one another, and about the culture, do you think those are accurate statements?
I think it's good. Diane, do you have any comments on the, the number areas of the employee profile?
Oh, the percentage of staff that has been there under a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
I think that's from information that we provided.
So, you'd agree it's, it's accurate?
I mean, I could double-check it. I just know the, the figures, I didn't do the percentages, but it looks accurate. I don't see any problem with it.
Okay. Steve, go ahead.
I guess, going back to the statement, a number of staff have taken recent retirement, and I understand the transparency that you're talking about. I'm just thinking that that statement might be able to be placed farther in the paragraph after you talk about the average tenure of a FPB staff person. That way, it looks like the people that are leaving are the people who are naturally leaving after the average time that they've been here, as opposed to taking early leave, early retirement, which raises questions.
So, just reorganizing the paragraph is what you're talking about?
Yeah, reorganizing that statement. The only other thing I'd say about the paragraph is, when we talk about the staff and the leadership team, the collegiality and all those things, I don't think you can, I think you can go too far with that sweetness, where it becomes like you're trying to entice someone to come, but other than that, I'm good with it.
Okay, any other comments?
Any suggestion on verbiage there that you feel more comfortable with?
Oh.
In which one? The first statement I made?
The collegial part, I think.
The collegial part.
Well, it's, let's see, well, you know, maybe just stop it after the, have great respect for one another. You know, the part about raising their hand and stuff might be a little bit much, and it might turn off a future leader who may come in and say, you know, they're so close together, I'm not sure if I can do anything here that challenges one of these, one of the staff persons because they're so close, or so whatever, together.
We did write that everyone can raise their hand, so it encourages one another to put their different perspectives on the table. So, it's trying to achieve kind of the, I mean, I hear what you're saying. We're trying to demonstrate that it is an open environment where, you know, it isn't a group of, you know, two or three people that make all the decisions, kind of thing.
I don't have a big problem...
I hear what you're saying.
I don't have a big problem with it. I just pointed it out. If it's, you know, if it stays, I'm fine with it, it's just, that was a comment.
And I liked what you said, too, about the taking retirement early, the second sentence, a number of staff have taken retirement recently, we could move that farther down in that paragraph, or we could, you know, we could remove it altogether. The reality is that the utility industry is that there's a large, I mean, what's happened at FPB is not unique to the industry, so it's almost a statement that we could just take out entirely and just say that, you know, their active initiative is ongoing to attract and retain a talented workforce, and just kind of skip it altogether.
Well, I don't know. We do have an influx of a lot of new people, so in a way, I think it's good that it's there, but to de-emphasize it by putting it later in the paragraph makes sense to me.
Okay. We can do that. I'm just taking a note. And I think it's, I think it's just, again, we found it to be a valuable statement that, you know, that make it clear that we're, you know, looking for somebody who is going to help continue to attract, retain, and engage the workforce of the organization. Somewhat standard verbiage from search to search, but again, I think that that, we find that to be a, something that connects people to the search process. So, then we go into some of the fun things about the challenges, and again, this is, very much appreciate some of the information that was shared with us through those questions we posed. You know, and I think these are, these really kind of tell a story in terms of, but just kind of reading through them one by one. I mean, knowing that it's a capital city, now, when you have utilities that are in the city, it's just, people care a lot, people tend to care a little bit more about the communities and about the operations of their utilities, and it's just, we see that all over the country. And it's, you know, it's a, with a frequent turnover of the political cycle, whereas the utility is really looking for longer-term planning, there's a bit of a, you know, an issue there. And that's something that, I mean, I'd love to get all of your perspective on that, but we find that that could be an interesting talking point because, with candidates, because, you know, utilities do need to look longer term, and how do you, how do you interface, or what kind of track record do candidates demonstrate working with local governments, I think can be very telling about finding good candidates. The, there was some comments about, you know, and I've seen, I've done my due diligence looking online at some of the challenges between the Board and the organization, and I served on a elected Board here in San Diego, Planning Board, represented, represented our section of the city, and some of those meetings were very heated. I always felt like, I was always trying to do what was best for the people of the community, but I do know that people can get, that can be very, those can be very challenging environments, and it's nothing that scares me away. I think it's stuff that a good general manager can help have confidence, the Board can have confidence in that person, and help things move forward, but I, again, in the spirit of transparency, I never liked candidates having surprises. So, we listed those things there, and I think those are really valuable areas, are their challenges to navigate. We want to make sure we find somebody that has the right temperament and skills to be successful in that environment. Any, any comments on those four bullets?
I have a comment on the, I guess it's the second bullet that talks about registered Democrats and Republicans and conservative values. I think that, again, is insulting, the second, the second sentence there. I think it's insulting to the people of this community to have this in here, and I really feel strongly about striking that bullet.
Okay, comments from any other Board members on that? We're looking at the second bullet under "Challenge to Navigate" on the Board.
And that was language taken from a Board comment, so I, and I do agree, it is a strong statement, and it's one here I put a little mark to discuss. You know, I mean, it's one of those things that we could recraft in a, you know, maybe with gentler language, that's non-divisive, party, non, you know, party-specific, but just talks about, you know, moving the organization forward, getting the, you know, creating, getting government on board with new ways of thinking about energy and generation and fiber, those projects. Dawn, I think you're, it is a very strong statement, and anyway, I'd love to hear everybody's perspective on that, but it's going to be an issue striking that.
John, this is Ralph. Good afternoon.
Hi, Ralph.
My reaction to that bullet point is, I would delete the second sentence of that. That's what I would do with it. I think almost everybody agrees that conservative values dominate in this part of the country, but after that, I think it sort of jumps to a conclusion that a lot of people would differ with, the characterization of the people that I don't think is fair and needs to be said. So, that's what I would do with that bullet point, and I'd leave the first sentence in and take out the sentence.
I can live with that.
And Steve, were you about to say something on that, too?
Well, I agree with Ralph there, but I had just some comments on the overall area, section. And I don't know if we're at that point or not. Well, what I, I just, I just think that whole section, "Challenges, Challenges to Navigate on a Board at Political Level," needs to be couched in a more positive frame, and I think it can be done without being, what's dishonest, I guess is the word. You start out, when you start out, Frankfurt's a capital city, those things are true, but because it's the capital city, there's a lot of politics, and there's a lot of people who have grown up, are around, surrounded about a lot of issues that, that across the spectrum. And so, therefore, they, they are opinionated, they're informed and opinionated by the political dynamics that are going on in the country and in, in this state. So, therefore, their opinions are going to fairly be pretty... So therefore, their opinions are going to fairly be pretty heated, and I would, I would bring that to the board too, with the comments about the trust, I would couch those in more that because we are coming from this, this environment we're in, that a lot of people have strong opinions about various types of things as it relates to whatever, and in the case here, it's, it's energy, it's cable, it's fiber to the home, those kinds of things have generated, but it's because I think of where we are and the environment that we live, and because we are informed and inundated every day by it, that it is, so I really, I'd rather say the board members, rather than, than there's a lack of trust, there is a, there is heated discussions and strong opinions among board members on the opposite sides of issues as they relate to the plant board, because that really generates the same kind of friction that I think you're, that, you know, someone's going to take from that going for, you know, some candidate.
Steve, do I hear that correctly, talking about it as heated discussions, but not a lack, not a lack of trust?
Well, I think, I think, and again, I may be walking a tight rope here in some senses, but I think you can talk about when someone has, has passionate opinions on a topic, and the, and the colleague has a passionate decision in the opposite fashion, you know, that passion sometimes makes us heated and hot, and perhaps do things that we otherwise might not do, and, but it's driven by the passion and the heat of the, of the moment versus a really real lack of trust. So I mean, I think the political environment in which we live has determined, in which front we live in Frankfurt fosters a definite line of demarcation or whatever, something that says, I'm on this side or that side, or I'm on the fence, and, you know, we have just enough knowledge maybe to be dangerous to, to support while we're there, and the passion of politics in Frankfurt, you know, you know, can get you in, you know, a heated discussion, so, you know, I just don't, I don't, I don't like the word trust or mistrust, I think we're just, we're just on different sides of a coin on various issues as it relates to the plant board, and because we're passionate about them, they become heated, and that state of mind generates some of the same similarities as trust and mistrust. So I don't know how to do that, I mean, I guess we could work on, on a way to write that, but I would rather write it that way because I don't think this board is different than other boards in, in most things.
Okay, that's really helpful, and I, that was kind of my point earlier, having served on a number of boards, including some boards where we were dealing with very heated topics, I can, I can be aware of those elements. I would ask if there are any other thoughts on these things, and we're happy to, and I'm happy to take a stab at reworking those, those bullets and then passing them back for review and feedback, but any, any other thoughts on those things?
I think it's a good idea, if you could take a rework, pass that and circulate that, that'd be good.
And I'll give my ideas to the chair, and she can pass them on, or Diane, well, I'll give them to the board members, and if they like them, you can do what you want with them.
Okay, so I think, John, you got a good perspective on the thought process and...
Okay. All right, sounds good, so we will do that, we'll include that as part of our rework section there with all, all four of those bullets. Key stakeholders, this is a combination of our thoughts as well as the questions, this all came from the three board members who, who gave us some responses. Are there any, we think it's good to list key stakeholders, and then we can talk with candidates about how they've interfaced with such stakeholders? Any, anything here that looks like there, it's missed, or any, any quick thoughts there?
Just one quick one, eight and nine are actually the same thing, just worded a different way.
Ah, okay.
Yes, that's correct, that's right, same thing.
So it could be County Judge Backslash Fiscal Court on one line.
I think so.
And I would add on the last, the, the last one, Kentucky Capital Development Corporation, they're represent industrial customers, so we could add industrial customers in parentheses.
We've got industrial customers on there in three.
Oh, we do? Oh, okay, maybe not.
I would add civic organizations and Kentucky State University.
Kentucky State's a good one.
Okay.
Okay, how about news organizations?
We want a local school system and university, do you just want to expand number 11?
No, I would make Kentucky State because I think that's an area of possible growth for us if we can do or do.
With Kentucky State University as a separate item, what was the second one that was, in conjunction with Kentucky State?
I said civic organizations, because I don't see any where the optimists, Kiwanas, places where you might go and speak.
Does 12 cover that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, I'll thank you.
Okay, maybe it does, something, okay.
I'm sorry, and I still couldn't hear what the, I heard, in addition to Kentucky State University, which we'll add, what was, and we're going to put County Judge Backslash Fiscal Court on one line, and what was the third add?
I think that's it.
What about news organizations? News organizations?
So what are you thinking of beyond the State Journal?
Any of them.
Certainly, I'd add, we have the media discussion somewhere in here, but I can add media. I'll put it in there. All right, and is that an accurate statement? Relationships between the agency and interest groups positive, been improving in recent years, but what's to be done, again, I want to make sure that that's A, accurate, and B, that also helps us, we want to find candidates who have demonstrated an ability to manage those relationships and even improve upon them, so.
Looks good.
Okay, I'll move on. Relationship with FPB and the city, I, I think it's good to help candidates understand, one of the, I think one of the board members provided this information, and I think it's good for candidates to make sure they understand the relationship between the organization and the city and the board.
You put the, you put the statute in here, I think, somewhere else, that, that might be a place to, to put that statute also, the KRS.
Yeah, I think we did, yeah, no, I did, so I think that, that sounds like a good suggestion, I have to, where is it? Yeah, to under governance and supervision. We could probably combine relationship with FPB and the city under, probably move that section to governance and supervision, is that okay with everybody?
Sounds good. We have agreement.
And then, wanted to make sure, I think it's good that, just in providing more information, that candidates understand the switch over from relying on LG and EKU over to, do you say Kynea, or do you say KYMEA? What's the proper pronunciation of that word?
I don't know that there's agreement on it, different people say it in different ways.
But I say Kynea, and I also say KYMEA, so I think people will understand you if you say either.
Okay, I get you now. And I think that's really, you know, I understand the value that an organization like Kynea provides to, you know, smaller utilities, and anyway, I, I think that that's, I think that's a neat statement, especially that Frankfurt, where the leader informing that, again, as we look at candidates, we want to ideally find folks that have been involved and engaged in those types of conversations about kind of similar relationships. The next paragraph about Frankfurt, again, I'd love some perspective here, this is taken from your website, Chamber of Commerce, things like that, so it's, none of this is really my language at all, but I'd love, you know, if you know, you know, if you know of any place that really kind of summarizes Frankfurt well, I welcome any, welcome any perspective here. And I'll just add too, to that, what I really, what I really like and I find attractive, I spent my childhood in Ohio, just not so far from the Kentucky border, and, and then we moved to the big city of Chicago, so I had all sorts of different perspectives as a, as a kid growing up, but I really, really connected with towns like Frankfurt that, you know, are, are small, they're scenic, but at the same time, you know, it's a very important city for the state of Kentucky, and, and because of it being a state capital, there's a lot of business and commerce that's related to that, and I think it really gives the city an attractive, a pure, attractive edge for candidates that might be coming from other places. But anyway, I'd love, I'd love more perspective there, or Diane, if you have anything that summarizes Frankfurt, we can cut and paste.
We, we make a lot of whiskey here, that attracts people.
Well, that's a good point.
I was debating putting that in or not, I was going to ask you.
Well, the city went, that's a big business.
And there's a large number of distilleries there.
There are.
Something that you'd like on there, I mean, I think it's a, it's a neat element.
The city would chose, went through a branding process and chose Kentucky Distilled, is that correct? Frankfurt Distilled, sorry, Frankfurt Distilled, reflecting on the bourbon industry, so I think, I think it's worth mentioning.
It has a big presence there. Buffalo Trace says they get four to five thousand visitors a week, visitors.
Ooh, wow.
Two things, I want to, first is Frank, F-O-R-T.
Oh, I missed that.
But, but the other thing is, is you probably have discovered, being in California now, and I've, when I've lived other places, the perception of Kentucky, people don't know where you are when you're in Kentucky sometimes. So the part where you say we were between Louisville and Lexington, I'd rather, I'd like to further describe that they were 30 minutes from Lexington and 45 minutes from Louisville, to understand that, you know, if you think all of Kentucky is out in the boondocks somewhere, that, that it's not all that way, and if I can say it, that's politically correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so putting the mileage, or putting the time between Lexington and Louisville, and I did read that somewhere, so I think that that's, you know, just to show that it's close proximity to those larger cities.
Connected by Annecy, no.
Yeah, I like, I don't even, I'm trying to remember where I found it, but somewhere I read that, and it might have been from the Development Corporation website, something about Frankfurt is a day's drive from 65% of the US population, I thought that was a cool statement. You okay if we leave that in there, or is that?
I think it's good.
And we'll put in the mild, or put in the drive time between Lexington and Louisville. Any, any other activities or anything that you think you found, or Diane, that you found when you're tracking candidates from outside of Frankfurt to the, to the region?
I think this is a good description, I think Mr. Mason mentioned there's a couple variations of spelling that'll need to be corrected, but...
Oh, okay, feel free to point them out, I didn't jump out on my spell check, but...
Frank Ford, it was an O instead of U.
In Franklin County, is L-I-N.
L-I-N.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. That's interesting. Okay, I'll double check on all those things, so. All right, moving on to the position summary, so this whole next page, some of it came from verbiage, from you all, but a lot of this comes from just our experience doing other GM searches for other utilities, because we didn't have a job description to work from, so since we weren't given one, typically, what I typically do is I put a, what we've utilized for others, and then we can bend and shape it from there. So you'll see 14 essential job duties and just a general summary. What's important to me, I want to make sure that we represent accurately the relationship and the powers of the general manager versus the powers of the board, and that we, that's where you find some distinction from agency to agency, and I want to make sure we capture that accurately, but any, any thoughts as you read through this page?
I have, I have one in the paragraph where it says, additionally, the general manager must demonstrate, I really think the most impactful thing that any leader can have is effective management and organizational skills. Without that, you could be the most knowledgeable person in any field, but if you cannot do that, you failed. Or apt to fail.
Effective management and organizational skill.
So Steve, would you see that possibly in like the second paragraph?
It would come after demonstrated.
Must demonstrate.
Must demonstrate, yeah, I see that, like the six lying down.
Yeah.
And I think we do talk about that in some of the traits down below, but no reason we can't put it in that position summary.
I just think that if you don't have those skills, it really doesn't, well, it does matter, but it, if you don't have those skills, you can, you can shoot yourself in the foot with, with, with the lack of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that person going to have...
I think it's a good point. Unless the board has any issues against it, I'll make sure that we put that in that first paragraph.
We have acceptance here, that's good.
Okay. Essential job duties, again, this is from kind of some prior work, prior searches we've done, so there's nothing here that's, you know, generally, this is, we try to make this inclusive, but we probably could have, you know, there could be some bullets that are forgotten here that you'd like us to include, I know there's a lot of information here, but, you know...
Are you just...
Bullet eight came from another org, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you just talking about the essential job duties, or have you moved on to key initiatives?
Essential job duties.
Okay.
And these are things generally that are general, non-specific, the intention here is to talk about the job without talking about any specific tasks this person would be involved in, you know, there's, you know, nothing here that would talk about, you know, overseeing a reservoir upgrade, for example, that would come a little later, these are just kind of the high, the 30,000-foot elements of the job. And bullet, the one thing I will notice, I kind of gave pause on it, bullet eight, I got this from a prior client's job description, and we, we could probably say that in just a more generic way. that in just a more generic way. And then bullet six and bullet 12 have some similarity, and we could probably put them next to one another, but they have a slightly different, slightly different compass.
I think your suggestion to put those near each other makes sense.
How are we doing with everybody's time? I know we're coming up to the top of the hour. Can we go over that, or will we need a hard stop there?
We're flexible. I think we're getting close to completion here, so I think we should just continue on if it works for you.
I think probably 10, 15 more minutes, we'd be all done.
Good.
All right, so I can, I'll move on for now to key initiatives. Those are some things that came to us, that you all provided, and I thought there were some really good bullets there. And again, those are some areas where we can talk with candidates and see what kinds of relevant experience they have in doing some of those types of things. Nobody's going to hit on all the marks, but we often talk about transferable skills, and so we'll look at things that somebody may have done that would be a good complement or certainly have some relevance, even if it's not the, not specific to one of these items.
On the third from the bottom, under key initiatives, upgrade the customer service department to enable electronic accounting versus electric account processing.
And I don't know what you're really...
I'm sorry, Anna Marie, what's the comment on that?
That rather than electric, it should be electronic account processing.
Oh, electron, yeah, okay. And I thought that was a neat thing. Where is that in process?
I would say it's something we're looking toward. People can pay online and some of those things, but it's not completely streamlined at this point.
Okay. We could change that wording to, you know, I want to make sure it's something that, kind of what the status is of that, we could talk about that, something that's being looked at.
And the one above that, the FTTH project is actually in flight.
It's in process?
It is.
So would we want it at all?
I think it's certainly important to note, but just that wording makes it look like it's a lot further out on the horizon than it is.
Okay, that's great to know. Let me get that note, note it. We can talk about these key initiatives in terms of what the status is of them today.
A question. Under these key initiatives...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
What's, what's the applicant gaining from this? What question is this evoking from that person? You know, because some of these things, rather than giving me knowledge, gives, makes me have a question. You know, improve customer relations, you know, that's a question for me if I'm an applicant.
Well, to me, I saw that as you're asking the applicant, do you have experience in this area, and how would you address these situations?
But you have it under key initiative as opposed over here under essential job, well, maybe under job duties, but that causes a question for me as opposed to giving me some information about what we're doing. Naturally, we are under, it probably says customer relations over here in the key initiative, doesn't it, somewhere? I mean, under essential job duties.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, some of these things where they're, you know, those are goals rather than initiatives that, you know, customer relations is pretty much a given goal for just about any organization. So to have it under, over there as a key initiative tells me, may make me think that it's a negative customer relations problem in Frankfurt. And so I don't...
Now, that's a good point. That's a good point, Steve. And that could be something that could be moved to, because it is, I mean, it is always a, you know, a key element of this person's responsibility as GM. But we certainly don't want to present it as an issue. I think our intent was to present it like Anna Marie, like you had just mentioned. But what if we moved it to under skills and competencies? In terms of, you know, customer-focused ability to improve customer relations, or an executive always focused on, you know, customer-focused. I do want to, I do want to find kind of just out candidates that have experience improving relationships, and that's one area, that's a key area that we certainly want to flush out.
But if they have customer relations experience, at least significant, then they probably, the likelihood is that they know how to improve it. The other thing for me is improving the plant board's position with KYMEA. I mean, again, that's a question, that evokes a question in my mind as an applicant versus telling, you know, telling them something. You know, over here where you talk about the ability, and I can't find it now, and I forgot what it was, where you're talking about being able to address the civic groups, the city, all those external groups that a general manager might encounter and have to talk to to impress the plant board's position on, or whatever, that seems to come under that skill. And KYMEA probably, in my opinion, doesn't need to be pointed out as one of those organizations that needs the improvement with, because again, it becomes a question to me as the applicant, what's wrong with their, their relationships with KYMEA? So again, I think that doesn't need to be a key initiative, because that's something we should have anyway. It's like customer relations. We need to have a good relations.
I guess I see your point there. What I would add to that, though, is that KYMEA is a very new structure for us to be working with, and that there's still open decisions that need to be resolved, that it is a new organization. So bringing that into the picture as a key initiative, I think is reasonable.
Can you change this sentence to say?
Enhance or manage?
Maybe just something more towards just the newness of the power supply and ability to engage in...
Perhaps develop.
Well, our initiative is coming up to speed with the, still, and I'm not saying this right, but still learning the environment of KYMEA. That's an initiative.
How about rather than improve, what if we said develop FPB's position within KYMEA?
I don't think our, I don't think our position needs developing or improving. We're part of KYMEA. We are one of the municipalities involved, we are one of however many it is municipalities involved in KYMEA. I don't see where it's an issue of improving our position or whatever. I think like Steve says, it raises an issue that really is not an issue.
Well, what if you said something like adapting to the transition to KYMEA?
I like it.
That way, you're really talking about, we're trying to come to grips with how to proceed under that, this new organization, as opposed to making it sound like, hmm, there's a problem there.
Yeah, I like the adapting. I like, you know, the concept of, you know, protecting our interests, or, that's not the right way to put it either, but, you know, ensuring local benefit or something along that line.
Well, I like adapting to the transition. I think that was excellent, Steve. Diane, did you want to add something there?
No, I was thinking maybe represent Frankfurt Plant Board.
Okay.
That's a duty, though. That's not an initiative.
Okay, yep.
Would you like, so I wrote in adapting to the transition and protecting utility interests. And we could move that under the goals and outcomes for the position, but I, or I think maybe like that, if I'm hearing you correctly, keeping it under key initiatives, but certainly changing improved to adapting to the transition within the Kyme structure. Do you like protecting utility's interests, or just strike that altogether?
I'd just be simply to transition to KYMEA. That kind of says it, all the other stuff going after that. And that is a key initiative.
It is.
Okay, then it's good to keep it in there. That's good.
Yes, I think so.
Is everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Could we discuss the last bullet point there about renegotiating this contract for 2022? I think that's a little...
That's not really accurate.
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't be renegotiating in '22, but the, we'll be acquiring new power and the dynamics of the contracts will be changing, so I don't know how you state that. We wouldn't really be renegotiating this contract. We'd be negotiating new contracts for new power that would fall under KYMEA.
Okay. Should we state that as non, I thought I had read or was provided data that it was a three-year contract.
Well, in 20, yeah, in 2022, there'll be some new PPAs coming, and they'll be coming in the next few months or between now and then. And so there'll be, you know, the GM would be active in the negotiation of those power contracts.
Well, really, the GM would not be active. The KYMEA representative from the plant board would be the more active one, and the GM would be...
It could be the GM.
Well, true, that's true, that's true.
So I think down there perhaps that you could put in there, a key initiative is, is the anticipation and analysis of power purchase contests, whatever.
Power purchase agreements.
Power purchase agreements.
What do we, is it participation in future power purchase agreements? Is that...
It probably needs to impending, something that say that it's coming quick. So impending, or whatever the word should be.
So involvement with pending power purchase agreements?
Yeah, but, and the analysis of it, because, you know, you want someone that can, you know, what we're going to be doing is trying to understand and analyze the contract, so, you know, the, so anticipating and analyzing impending power purchase agreements. And imminent, or whatever, whatever gets it closer.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll rework that last bullet to, we'll take out the date and talk about participation and analysis and power purchase agreements will come up. All right, governance and supervision. What do y'all think of that paragraph there? Specifically, I wanted to talk about the last sentence, that's what I had flagged. There was some comments that the, and I think it's, you know, I've seen this in all boards I've been involved in, you know, what is the role of the board? How involved is the board? Clearly, you know, a day-to-day decision, and how does that impact the organization's ability to, and employees of the organization to do what they need to do and feel engaged and motivated to come to work every day? And, yeah, I think the role of the board is pretty specifically spelled out in the, you know, in the KRS guidelines. But it sounds, and I wanted to pose this question, and that is, it sounds like the person who's been the interim is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is doing a good job, is not interested in the top job. But perhaps if there was somebody at the helm who you all had trust and faith in, then you maybe wouldn't feel the need to be as involved in, you know, as hands-on and daily activities. So anyway, just, I want to kind of get from you, your perspectives on your involvement with the organization, so we know, you know, the kind of leader that it's going to take to work well with you and to integrate with your level of involvement with the organization.
I don't know how we get all that in one sentence.
Right, I wasn't sure where to start.
I guess, I guess my general thought would be something that maybe, if we're going to put a comment in there along that line, something that leans towards, you know, constructive engagement between the general manager and the board, you know, something that speaks to it more on those terms.
And we could talk, a strong leader should, will be well-skilled at working constructively with the board of directors.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that.
My ideas on this sentence particularly is that we need a, we need a strong general manager that is secure and mature in the sense that they can help the board maintain the delineation between what the board does and what the management does. And because, you know, we're the board right now, the board may change, will change, you know, in the, in the future, in the months or years. So where this board might be okay with how the functions are between the board and the staff, another board may want to infringe on the staffs or the management. So therefore, for me, to be consistent and for the future, we need a manager that has a strong sense of what the management does and what the, what the organization does, what the board's role is in that operation, and be secure enough to resist when a future board, our current board, infringes on those roles. So how we put that in this sentence, I haven't formed it in my mind, but, but I...
I like that. I mean, I think that's a good point about a mature, confident leader who can manage, you know, has the ability to manage upwell to the board and downwell to the organization and serve in that role. It's, you know, it takes, to your point, Steve, it takes confidence and maturity to make that happen. I don't know if we would need to put that in the governance and supervision section. My suggestion would be we put that in the skills and competencies.
No, I was just telling you what I was looking for, and that's why I said I don't know how you, you put that. I know you don't put that in this sentence. I know you need something more generalized, but I guess my generalized statement would be, the board is seeking a strong, secure person to run the operations of the plant board to maintain the delineation between what is the function of the management and what the function of the board is.
Hmm, that's a good statement, okay. So when you hear silence on my end, just write anything down. Okay. Now, it all worked out in our revision. Goals and outcomes for the position, again, I'm showing comments that it said safety, enhance the safety of the highway system, I don't know if it shows that comment on your end, that was unsafe, should you say enhance the safety of the...
Oh, it does.
You know, the workforce and the community.
Yes.
Are those prioritized?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are those prioritized in importance?
No, no, those aren't prioritized at all. In fact, I usually like, I could put them in alphabetical order, so they show no prioritization, prioritization. But what do you think of those four areas, and is there anything missing? Longevity was one, as one board member pointed out, and I think that's a nice statement, you know, and it shows candidates, hey, they're not just looking for someone to quick fix and be gone, they're really looking for someone to stick around. That attracts candidates. Again, efficiency, and, you know, typically we find that as an important goal for the position, customer satisfaction, and we were talking about that earlier, in terms of, you know, we can expand on customer satisfaction, it's just very generic in this section. You know, customers can be all sorts of customers. And then safety, I usually list safety first, just because safety is typically, depending on the organization, a thing that they like to promote. But I'm open to however you'd like to prioritize these, or if you, other things you'd like to add here, or strike.
I think it looks good, I liked your idea about alphabetical order.
I know in number three, Roman number three, you have, is talking about management, but I think you have to mention financial management as one of the goals. I think that needs to be specified, because, you know, that is, without that, none of the rest of it exists.
But it does say cost-effective, so wouldn't that cover financial?
Strong financial management is a goal, because...
So I just changed that, what do you think of employee innovative, cost-effective, and sound organizational and financial management practices to lead an efficient organization?
Well, I mean, it's in there, but if I'm trying to emphasize something, I'm going to make it separate, financial management, because with, you know, there's a lot of managers that have taken organizations under. And again, it goes back to my earlier point about, you know, you can be the most specialized person in electrical, cable, telecom, or whatever, but if you don't have the management and organizational skills to lead the organization, it still tends to fail. So financial manager that has a goal of maintaining the financial integrity of an organization, to me, is always good, and I want one that, I want someone to know that that's something that we value. I mean, our interim general manager has always talked about the financial security of the plant board, and I'd like to maintain that with the next general manager.
I just put it as a, I just put it as a separate number five, goals and outcomes. Does that, does the board support that? I think that's a good idea.
Yes, we do, we do.
Okay. Qualifications and skills, this came from you all, I don't think I added anything different here, maybe just tried to quantify the third bullet a little bit, but what do y'all think of those requirements? Bachelor's degree, is that, in your eyes, is that a mandatory?
Well, the Kentucky revised statutes do say that the person should be an engineer.
Does it say shall or should?
Thought it said we can...
It says shall by management, by education certification, I believe.
Isn't it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as you have a chief engineer on record for the utility, but it need not be the general manager? Maybe we can get some clarification on that, or we can just make, you know, we can just make it easy and just, you know, look for, make that a criteria, the search, but I wonder, how do we get, what's the best way to get clarity on that?
I think James, our attorney for the board, is looking that up to see the specific language.
I know what it says, but I'm looking at it to confirm it.
So while he's checking that, we could talk about the other aspects.
Yeah, could you go down to bullet point one, two, three, five, and the last few words there, and have a worldview perspective? I really don't think that's necessary. I'm good with, you know, must have a good understanding of competing issues in power generation and energy delivery, but I would just like a period there.
That's right, I suspect, I know one of you had provided that statement, and I, you know, I think that it probably dawned, to your point, it probably is captured without having that last, those last six words. You know, we want to attract and source candidates that, you know, aren't operating in a bubble and really are in tune with, you know, what opportunities are available to utilities, like F P B, and I think maybe it is captured there with good understanding of competing issues, and like I said, just went up those six words like you mentioned. Is that, everybody okay with that?
Yes, I think that's, that's fine. I do like the concept of a worldview perspective versus just very close to a specific area, but maybe that will come out in other areas of the document.
And then the last bullet, I question if that needs to be a requirement?
Should we put that into desired? Or we could put that into, well, if I could flush out that experience?
Yeah, I would too.
Whether they have it or not, so maybe move it to desired?
I guess if I was to parse it, required would be, you know, energy planning experience, and desired could be integrated resource planning experience, but I think the energy planning should be required. How would we parse that?
Are we looking for a person that, what if you have an expert in cable that is a candidate? That's not in energy? Or expert in water? That's not in energy? Is, are those people not excluded because of that statement, that bullet?
Well, it's a good point, and there's some balance there between, you know, the revenues of the various agencies and the responsibility of the organization.
Yeah, I know, but so are we...
But it's hard to imagine us hiring a G M without, you know, electrical background, just given the revenues, the importance, and the changes that are there.
Why not? Our last G M had a water background.
But when you do look at our budget, half of our cost is electrical, or electricity that we're reselling, so that it is a very important level.
Yeah, but I do agree with Steve, we don't want it to be exclusionary, so it probably does go...
I would think that would be more under skills and competencies than either required or desired.
I'm not, and I'll ask you all on that, how many people, does anyone on our staff have experience in developing I R P now?
I don't believe so.
So I mean, so if Vint doesn't have it, and he's our electrical person, then I'm wondering how many people out there would be participating, would have had that kind of experience in what you're asking for here?
In the broader energy market, the majority of them, it's the standard planning process in the entire...
I understand that, but that would be in his position, in the specialization position of electrical as opposed to the manager, and that's why I go back to the strong manager and organizational skills that I'm talking about, you know, often with the being on experience in these areas, but I think it's being exclusionary, using your word, to have it here, because I don't want to exclude people who might not have it, who may have a strong organizational management skills that's going to be needed.
That's where I am with it too, I think, you know, I think it's important for us to emphasize the planning, but in those long-term planning attributes, but I think, you know, the specifics of that could move into desired or move into something, so it's not exclusionary and it's more of a weighted.
I also don't want to make someone who reads this think because it's under desired and that person may not have that, that they can just may as well mark this position off of their list, because that's then the under desire, because, you know, required is looked at, but desired is also looked at. If I don't meet the desire, that tells me that, well, if someone else has that, I'm not going to be considered here.
Well, okay.
John, what do you think about all that? I mean, do you have some thoughts on phrasing where we can get, you know, the concepts of those long-term planning inside required, but not have it be exclusionary to candidates that might be well positioned in other areas?
Yeah, it's a great point, it's really, really good topic of discussion, you know, I think we could easily list under required, long-term planning experience in water or power, and then under desired, you know, list integrated resource planning, you know, more specific there, or we could leave it out altogether, but it is, to your point, it is kind of, if folks are leading in energy utility, they're going to have, they're generally going to have good experience in that area. But the bigger question that I'm really intrigued by is understanding, you know, where you see, how involved in the operations do you see this person, and this kind of goes a little bit to what Steve is talking about. You know, is this, is this person really going to be policy and politics eighty percent and twenty percent operations? And that would mean that there's a good energy manager in place, a good water manager in place, a good telecom, cable manager in place, or is this person going to really need to be more operationally savvy as a leader? And that's one of the key questions I had written at the end to pose to the board.
And John, that's my point here, is that, you know, if I'm the general manager, I'm going to require, actually demand that my people, you know, the electrical head, the cable head, would be experienced and knowledgeable in the areas that they're overseeing, because obviously if they're not doing that, then something needs to happen in their employment. If I have to be the administrator, the public face, the politician, and all those things, plus I have to be able to do the analysis on this public power agreement, purchase agreement, then I'm stretching myself pretty far. So that's why I'm stressing, in my opinion, the organization and management skills, with a bent on understanding the area that we're in, which is all of them, because I don't want, I don't want, I want that person to be able to do that and demand from his or her people that they are able to take care of their specialized areas.
Yeah, I agree, I think we're hiring a manager, we're not hiring necessarily an engineer. You know, we need someone with strong management skills, not necessarily someone with strong engineering skills or modeling skills or whatever. We can get those things either from our staff or from consultants that we employ. I don't think that the manager necessarily needs to have those individual skills.
I think there's a difference between, and maybe this is where the disagreement's coming from, I think there's a difference between someone who's actually going to sit down and do the modeling and crunch the numbers versus someone that's been in a leader position of agencies that have done that type of planning. And I think that's, you know, kind of where we are, I don't think we need to hire a G M that's going to be in the day-to-day, just as I wouldn't expect the G M to produce a P and L, but I would expect him to be able to interact with the P and L.
Well, I guess I'd ask the question, what do you, what advantage do you see the manager having if he or she has the experience of developing and getting an integrated resource plan?
Well, I guess the big point I was trying to pull out of all that is I think it's important that we have a demonstrated experience of long-term planning activities, whether that's...
But what's the advantage in the position as a general manager?
Whether that's in water or whether that's in electric, I think is less significant. It's more about, you know, taking part in those processes of long-term planning and engaging with those long-term planning aspects.
Well, why don't you just say experience in long-term planning?
Yeah, I think that's where I was going.
As opposed to the I R P?
Yeah, and that's exactly where I was going, is I think in the requirements, we have that long-term planning discussion, and if we want to include the I R P later in the document...
I don't think you should, because that takes it right to one aspect of what we're trying to hire for, which is three or four different areas.
And I think a lot of long-term planning is part of the board's initiative, you know, to have the strategic plan for this organization as a board function, not necess, you know, in conjunction with the G M, but not necessarily left up to the G M, and that's something that the board, as far as governance, needs to be doing more of instead of managing.
But, Don, I respectfully disagree with you in some sense, because the long-term planning I'm talking about is the long-term planning of a tactical nature, as relates to the individual areas, but the long-term planning that we're doing is really at a 10,000-foot level, that may be, whether to go north, south, east, or west, and they're down navigating how we get to those things, and that's the long-term planning that I'm talking about is down at that technical level, and that's what I don't think a manager has to, should be down in, if he or she is in the, is leading the organization.
And it sounds, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, I think those are all very valid statements. It tells it from a requirement standpoint, you'd be open to somebody who is maybe stronger in water or stronger in electric, probably less intrigued just due to where the revenue comes from for the utility, probably less priority on the cable side of the business. Is that, is that accurate?
Not for me.
Yeah, I was going to say, revenue-wise, it would be electric, broadband, and then water.
As long as I have a strong electrical director or manager, you know, I don't need to, I don't, I don't need to have someone at the top that is specializing in electrical, because that manager, if he or she is strong and mature and secure, is going to understand that they're going to defer some decision that relates to technical stuff to them specialized people. They're going to manage their people as opposed to tell them where they want them to go in the technical arena.
Okay, so if I could make the suggestion that we take out from the requirements, anything that relates to specific background, whether it be electric, broadband, or water, and we'll talk about those things in more general, in a general sense, you know, like we do in, you know, the third bullet could be comparably sized utility or large utility, the electric, water, or telecom, or broadband space, but, you know, we'll just kind of keep it as an open framework, you know, long-term planning really more relates to, I think, what we were initially talking about, it's more from a utility standpoint, how they're going to get power, how they're going to meet their expenses, things that enable them to manage around the rate, but that we would flush out the specifics of a candidate's background on a checklist document and through our conversations with them. So in other words, it sounds like we need to have less priority around what their, or less requirements stated that pigeonhole into a specific type of the utility, again, whether it be electric, water, or broadband, and more around just the general requirements. water, or broadband, and, and more around just the general requirements. Does that, does that reflect everybody's needs and interest there?
Yeah, I think that.
I think so. And maybe this would be a good time to hear from James Liebman on exactly what the requirement is.
96.176 parentheses, three, after the statute, just talked about the board's operation of the company, quoting, "The board in the operation of such system may, in its discretion, engage the services of a professional engineer qualified by education, training, and experience in the operation, maintenance, improvement, and extension of electric and water systems as supervising engineer upon terms and conditions of service such as may be satisfactory to the board," et cetera, et cetera. So.
Sounds permissive to me.
What'd you say?
Sounds permissive.
Yes. Yeah, it does not say the general manager must be a engineer.
Is it just the wording of the title? I mean, it sounds to me like that could actually cover the AGM of each group.
It says may though.
I know. So are we covered off on that just by having those engineers as the AGMs? Does that cover that guidance?
Well, it says in its discretion, so I don't really see it as a requirement at all.
So we can take the engineering out of the...
I don't think we had it in there.
It wasn't on here. It was, just came up with the bullet point bachelor's degree.
Well, I'm not sure if I, I need it in a desired either.
I agree. I think I'd rather have someone with an MBA than an engineering degree as a GM.
Okay, what if, if I can make the suggestion that we listed as, we list desired would be an MBA, and we take off everything else that comes before that, and then through our checklist document, we'll flush out if somebody has a professional engineering certification or what their degree is in. And then we can make decisions based off of that knowledge, but we can remove it from the requirements or the desired requirements of the recruitment.
So are we saying?
Is the board in agreement there?
So then, where was that? Were we actually saying MBA? Or were we just saying bachelor's degree?
Bachelor's and then desired would be an MBA, or, you know, advanced degree. And that's pretty typical on job descriptions. Candidates aren't going to be, they're not going to be deterred if they don't have an advanced degree.
Okay. I, I think you've got it, John. That's good.
Okay. Skills and competencies. Yeah. Oh, the other thing I would say about desired, I didn't put it in there, but like, I think it'd be, you know, would the board be interested in somebody from one of the other nine or 10 or so municipalities that are part of the Kimea organization? Would, you know, I think that that's, that's closest to home. You've got somebody with state knowledge, local knowledge on some levels. That's why we put that in there, under desired. Just in terms of, actually, I'm sorry, I didn't put it in there under desired, but I was thinking about it in terms of, you know, just not worthy of job description, but just in terms of, would that be attractive to the board, somebody from in-state experience versus out-of-state experience?
I want the best manager.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. This is the best person for the job. I don't think we need to narrow it by geography or relationship or past any of that.
So on number 200, desired, we have work with the utility in Midwest or Mid-Atlantic, so we maybe strike out the regions?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, because it's...
Yeah, that'll seem reasonable.
Okay.
Strike that. That was a board comment. Is the board agreement that we could strike that out? I mean, we typically, when we lead a recruitment, we lead from a kind of a bullseye approach. We start closest to home and then we work out from there. Obviously, we want to make sure we're finding the best candidates for the job. But, you know, it's always nice if you don't have to, if somebody is comfortable in the geography and you know that they're not going to come in really dislike living in Kentucky and then leave and go back to New York City or something like that. You know, that's an extreme example, but that's typically how we lead a recruitment. We take a nationwide approach unless our client tells us not to, but we start, we start bullseye. We start closest to the location and work out from there. Does that, does that sound good to everybody?
I guess I would continue with emphasizing, we just want the best candidate and their location isn't really a factor.
Yeah.
Their location now.
I'm sorry. What's that statement?
Still, the emphasis is on the best candidate and whether they're from this area or from farther away. We, we think that that's a secondary consideration.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a secondary consideration. I think just whoever, whoever the best candidate is, regardless of where they're from.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take that. I mean, we take cultural elements into consideration in the recruitment. We don't need to put them on the job description. Same thing with that statement. It's a great statement in terms of wanting the best candidate regardless of where they're located. That's just something for our knowledge. And we won't, I mean, we won't put that on the, on the job description. But it's great to know that's how you feel. Skills and competencies. We're near the end here. So I, when I was back at Corn Ferry, largest retained search firm in the world, leading the utility sector for them, I helped pilot their latest assessment. And some of the qualities that we found related to best-in-class leadership, I continue to keep here under skills and competencies in terms of, anyway, some of the things you see listed here. So I'm trying to think, I don't know if the board, I don't know if there's anything here. I think this is all from me. I was looking to see if anything here was contributed from board members. The only thing is I added at the bottom, mature, strong, secure, confident leader. Stephen, I think you were talking about to be able to stand up to the board. We'll think of a better way to word that, but...
Please.
But the essence of that skill and competency. Anything here that's missing? Anything here that you'd want to strike?
We have reading going on. I think it looks good. Members could send their information to Diane and on to you, John, or directly to you, whichever we work out. But I think it looks good.
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a general question, John. In your experience dealing with utility the size of the plant board, what, what, can you describe the, just give me a, a description of the general candidate that may apply for this job, and how long that person may stay? If that makes any sense.
Yeah, well, you know, every, every organization, every organization's board has different needs. But generally, you know, what I, I tend to find in, in this, well, first of all, you know, we typically for a search like this, my recommendation is we go to other similarly sized utilities. If we go to, and ideally, I think the number one person at a similarly sized utility is going to have the right leadership competencies, is going to have the right experience on a policy and political level to be effective in this role in managing a board. I know we also talked about kind of the number two at a larger organization, and multiple board members were open with that too. We'll have to screen and assess those candidates carefully. We just want to make sure they have the right competencies to be effective and have had enough experience interfacing with the board, and have had the broad experience that I think would be valuable in this role. I mean, ideally, we want to try to shoot for candidates that have experience leading an organization in all three of those primary categories of electric, water, and broadband. But, you know, for the most, for the most part, companies of similar size have similar issues and have access to resources on a somewhat similar level. So my recommendation and suggestion for a search like this is that we do try to identify, and we know who those municipalities are that are similar in size to Frankfurt, and, and work from there. You know, a lot of times boards say, well, let's, let's look larger, thinking that you'll actually gain better experience. But it's not always the case. And again, we have to treat each candidate, excuse me, candidate individually, and as we put them through our process, kind of evaluate them on how effective they would be at FPB. But that each candidate would be different. Any situation is different. Steve, does that answer, I think that was Steve who asked that question.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And kind of to expand on that, so our approach traditionally, and we've offered it as part of the service, we can, we can place an ad and manage the job postings, manage the responses, candidate responses that come in from that. Oftentimes, we find our clients can do that too. And so where we really differentiate and add value is we add a very strategic and a little bit of art and science search approach, where we're going after passive job seekers. And those are people who are not actively looking at job boards. And that's the larger percentage of potential candidates out there. A lot of people in their various degrees of passive candidates, you know, will call up somebody who's the GM at a neighboring municipality, and they'll say, I was just thinking that I want to get my resume out there. And that's somebody that's really motivated and eager to engage with somebody like that. We'll also reach out to other GMs or potential candidates who maybe are, you know, have been at the same organization for 10 years and hadn't considered making a change. But the way we presented this opportunity, they think that that sounds like a great challenge, and, and maybe it's the geography that they're interested in living in too. Maybe they're burnt out from the political environment where they happen to be based. And so there's, like I said, there are various degrees of passive candidates. But our approach is really focused on looking for those people. And oftentimes, we find those people through industry associations, doing a lot of networking in the associations. You know, I find that there are JPAs that where other utilities have banded together to gain services from economies of scale. And sometimes those are great resources to, to find candidates as well. But I am finding, and I figured out this earlier today, I didn't answer it, but the average tenure today of a GM has gone down from, say, 10, 15 years ago. We are finding that candidates are staying for shorter periods of time. But we're not interested, you know, we really try to flush out candidates. Unless our client says we're looking for a turnaround leader and we need to be upfront with our, with candidates about that, that's pretty rare. Most of our clients want somebody to be on board longer term. And so as we talk with candidates, you know, we're looking for folks that are thinking of this as a seven to 10-year minimum kind of decision. How does that, how does that match your thoughts and expectations?
I think aiming for the longer seven to 10-year time period, or at least that, is, is our perspective, our ideal goal. We, we seem to have agreement here. People are getting maybe a little worn down.
Hard to hear the nodding heads.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you had a great, you know, someone there for a really long time. If I did a math, I think it was about 25 years, the prior GM was there.
One of them, I think.
Is that right?
Oh, well, not as GM the whole time, but yes, he was with the company for 25 years. That is accurate.
Yeah. So, yeah, it would be helpful in terms of the GM history of the organization. Maybe I can get that from Diana, just to, just to get the timeline, just going back kind of the last 10 years, how many GMs have been in the role. You know, if any other data, data on that would be great. I want to quickly move through the checklist unless there are any more questions on the position spec. We'll revise, make those changes, and resubmit them for your approval. Should I move on to the checklist?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay. So this is, this is a document, as I mentioned earlier, where we kind of rework the attributes listed on the job description to help us better understand what a candidate looks like and what they bring. This is an apples-to-apples comparison of a candidate. It's just one more data point that we can have, and we can flush out all sorts of information. I find that candidates really enjoy, it takes a bit of time on their part, but it helps engage them in the process as well. You know, if they're willing to take this time, it tells us that they really want to take a serious look at the opportunity. First section is just basic criteria. And I don't know, let's see here. I thought it'd be interesting to know if candidates have lived in a similar-sized town. You know, if they've lived in New York, I'll use New York City again. New York City their whole life. I'm not so sure that moving to Frankfurt is going to be the right cultural fit for them. So I wanted to get some perspective about kind of where the candidates have been in their life, and, and, you know, how well they connect with the environment in Frankfurt. We do have the statement in there about being a U.S. citizen. It's something that, for a search like this, it's rare that somebody, I don't think we, we're never going to find somebody not being, but again, it's just, it's just a line item we put in there anyway. We like to talk about relevant size and scope and understanding the environments that candidates come from. So we want, so we have questions here about total personnel under the person's leadership in terms of the size of the organization, that they have led, the size of the budget. Number of utility customers, I find is a, is a good, good point as well. And then general questions, we look at years of experience. And so we, we try to separate in terms of, you know, are they coming from a, a public agency, are they coming from an IOU? How many years they've worked for a utility and worked that bit in water, electric, or, you know, cable telecom? How many years of experience they've had leading 50, 100, 200-plus people? Really get a handle. You know, somebody could be leading an organization that's 225 people, similar in size to FPB, but maybe they've only done that for a year, and prior to that, their largest leadership experience was 50 people or 20 people or whatever. So we like to kind of calibrate candidates through those questions there, get a handle on where they've had interaction. You know, maybe because of their utility, they've only interfaced, maybe they've never had state-level experience or city-level experience, whatever the delineations are. We can kind of track all that. And these are approximates. We ask the candidates to provide this data to us, so it has an element of subjectivity to it. But where we do find, we can look across the data, and especially as we get into the next section about evaluating your skills in the following areas. So you see a lot of those line up with the number of years of experience. Somebody might think they're just top dog and give themselves a four on everything, but maybe they give themselves a three on one thing, and that tells us, okay, that's an area to put deeper. Or if they truly give themselves all fours, then we'll walk through and we'll say, you know, tell me more about your experience and, you know, whatever that issue is. So we, we won't just take it at fake value, but there's ways we can get more information through the data. It gives us a starting place, and it oftentimes gives us some very telling information. I talked about, you know, AMI and smart grids, sound like that's an area that's maybe the organization is moving toward. I mentioned water, advanced water technologies. I didn't hear that from any board members, but I just thought that might be an area to flush out. Anyway, you'll just, as you look through here, you'll see a lot of different things. Anyway, you'll just, as you look through here, you'll see a lot of different things. Feel free to make suggestions of things you're not interested in, or areas that you would be that we hadn't put here. And then you'll see a series of questions at the end where we just, we don't want to hold dissertation from candidates on various areas, but we do want some more perspective that can help fill in the gaps and help us understand the candidate's strengths and weaknesses in various areas. You know, tell us, give us a quick summary of their experience in the utility sector so that you can see quickly where they've had experience, and then also where they've had leadership experience. So those could be different things. They could, you know, only have leadership experience in an electric utility but spent a good part of their career also in a water utility. So they kind of flush out those differences. Want to learn more about how they manage diverse stakeholders, talking about their relationship, reporting to a board, and how they've managed that relationship, what their vision is for what good looks like, what best-in-class looks like for municipal utility. We always like candidates that have made improvements, so we ask the question of where you've made significant improvements in the operation of those entities, and that could be on an organization level or a functional level. I know, as mentioned, that before the prior director had left, there was a reorg initiative that was in the works, so I'd like to get some perspective on what kind of reorganization or improvement skills this executive has led. And then talk about their communication style. We talk about traits on the job description that are valued, that would be valued in this leader, but we really want to not pigeonhole them into, you know, do you have these traits or not, but really tell us, how do you communicate as a leader? How do you communicate with your staff? How do you communicate with your peers? How do you communicate with the board? How do you communicate with the community? And, let's see here. And then, we also like to hear why somebody thinks they're a good candidate, and why they're interested in the role. That can be very telling. You know, somebody might say they grew up in Kentucky, and they, you know, spent their adult years in Michigan, and they want to retire back in Kentucky, and maybe they, you know, see 10 years left in their career. And we get all sorts of information, you know, in a statement like that. And then the last question, you know, nobody's perfect. Anybody that says they're is, is not really have good self-awareness. I'd be happy to list my flaws, so I want candidates to list areas where they would want to feel supported, and areas that, you know, maybe they're stronger in water, maybe they're stronger in electric, maybe we want the board to send them off to a program to strengthen any areas where they might have weakness. And so we kind of flush out those. If they want to have a candidate, at least give me one example of something on that last question. So those are where the kind of the questions come from. Again, anything else that you all feel is missing there, or that you're not interested, we can either add or strike to the document. I'd be interested in your reactions. I know I just went through a lot pretty quickly.
Okay. Any comments? I think what might work here, John, is if everybody reads these over and sees if they have anything further to add and send them to you. So I think it looked like a very comprehensive and enlightening list for a candidate to go through, and I'm satisfied with it.
That sounds good to me. I know it's a lot to digest in a very quick period of time here.
Okay. And...
We won't... Oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, you can continue. Well, all I was going to say is, we do videotape our meetings, so this will be available on YouTube in a couple of days, and you'd be able to re-listen to it again if you're interested.
Well, that's great, that's great. Love to just kind of verify that, I think I heard everything, but it'll be good. I'll make sure to do that. And I think there was some question, too, about videotaping or video conferencing myself into the meeting. We've got technology that makes that pretty seamless and easy to do if we want to do that on any future discussions. And I also, we talked about this early on, but I also will make myself available to be onsite for any interviews or any board workshop facilitations that are involving the assessment of candidates. Happy to be onsite as, you know, as is feasible or as needed in those situations. And I look forward to getting to know all of you a bit better.
Okay. Well, thank you, John.
Absolutely. And the other thing, I'll just leave in terms of action items, so our, my action items for our premise then is that, over the course of today, we'll make the changes to the position specification document, and resubmit that to you for review approval. And then, once we've got your sign-off on it, we'll use that in the marketplace. I'll ask, in attempt that you'll be providing feedback to us on the checklist, and we'll make those changes as well, as soon as we receive those, any requests on that. But otherwise, we're building out our research strategy this week in terms of our target list of organizations that we'll be going to, as well as building out the contact list of individuals at those organizations that we'll be targeting. And so that will happen over the course of the next, it's already begun, but we'll continue now that we have had this conversation. It's really helpful in forming that strategy. So that will continue over this week, and we'll be getting out, starting our outreach to candidates specifically over the next few days.
Okay, sounds good. Any last comments? Everyone's worn out. We're all set to go.
Yeah. Thanks for everybody's time today. I really appreciate it. Like I say, having this conversation on the front end of a search goes a long way, making our work most efficient. We'll want to come back together in about three weeks to present, we call it our Search Status Calibration Call. You know, it's an opportunity for us to talk about our initial search findings with the board. We may have some candidates to talk about at that time. There'll be candidates at various stages of qualification on our end. Some may have just recently sent a resume, others we may have had multiple levels of discussions with. Again, we'll be very transparent in our approach and present everything through a status report document. And we like to say that three weeks really is an appropriate period of time. The market's constantly changing. We want to make sure that we have spent enough time where we can come back to you with real market intelligence about what we're seeing in the search. And it gives us the opportunity to come back and give you a better picture as opposed to coming back only after a week. So that's our preferred and recommended approach going forward. And then after we have that first status calibration call, we like to connect on a weekly basis beyond that going forward to keep momentum on the search. There'll always be things to talk about, could be one or two items, could be one or two action items, but then we'll want to move, kind of keeping the process going forward to there and working toward a formal presentation around 30 days where we'd be prepared to then take candidates. And by that point in time, move them toward onsite interviews with FPB.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll look forward to that. So it sounds like meet again in three weeks, and after that, weekly meetings.
Yep, correct, correct.
Okay, good.
And then a lot of the timeline really depends on your availability once we've got candidates and how, you know, we can help establish the interview process with you. But it really depends on how you wish to conduct the interviews, whether they're video or in person, and that will dictate kind of the timeline of the search beyond the first 30 days. But we'll do our best to keep things moving forward. You can count on that, and move to a successful outcome as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you, John. Goodbye.
Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your day. I appreciate it, and my lines are always open if anybody wants to reach out on any comment.
Okay. Thank you. Bye.
Take care. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, are people interested in a break, or you want to go on to the... Okay, we'll take a break, maybe come back at 10 after 3, if that works. Our next item, number two, is to convene the Municipal Projects Corporation for a brief bit of business. Do we have a motion to go into the Municipal Project Corporation meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have move and second. I believe that, James, you're going to handle a little unfinished business on the Municipal Projects Corporation.
Did we fail to do this?
We did it, but we had one person who said they had too much time, or had, didn't have time to be the Secretary Treasurer, and that I would like to, I would like to make a nomination for that position.
We certainly do, and I just didn't recall.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Okay.
Would the motion have to be to take whomever out of the position for us?
Yes.
Okay.
I would certainly agree with that, if we're going to undo what we did, or what the board did.
Okay.
I would think you would want a motion to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove Walt Baldwin from Treasurer, Treasurer Secretary, Secretary Treasurer, I guess.
Say it.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone impose? Okay, so we have removed Walt from the position of Secretary Treasurer for Municipal Projects Corporation.
Then the floor would now be open for nominees for the position of Secretary Treasurer of the Frankfurt Plant Board Municipal Projects Corporation.
Yes, and I would like to nominate Ralph Ludwig as the Secretary Treasurer for the Municipal Projects Corporation, noting that the Secretary Treasurer does not need to be a Director, and that he could continue beyond his time on the board.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Oh, you're leaving it? I'm sorry.
We're dividing authority.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
Just to be consistent, excuse me. Are there other nominations? All right, we'll close nominations for this position. All those in favor of Mr. Ludwig being the Secretary Treasurer of the Frankfurt Plant Board Municipal Projects Corporation, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Ludwig would stand elected to that position.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn the Municipal Projects Corporation meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have move and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No. Okay. We have now adjourned from the Municipal Projects Corporation meeting, and we're on to a public comment. Do we have any persons who'd like to make a public comment? Please go ahead. Andrew McDonald.
Hello, my name is Andy McDonald. I'm a Frankfurt Plant Board customer and resident of Franklin County. I wanted to read a brief letter that's being offered by a group of organizations and customers in support of funding energy efficiency programs. The folks who've signed on to the letter, this letter include Reverend Donna Arrows, pastor of Frankfurt St. Paul United Methodist Church, Adrian Bush, Executive Director of the Homeless and Housing Coalition of Kentucky, John Bush, customer and resident, Joel Fisher, President of the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association, Janet Gates, Executive Director of the Franklin County Women and Family Shelter, Annette Hayden, Chair of the Creation Care Ministry of the Bridgeport Christian Church, Connie Lemley, owner of Cedar Ring Greens Farm, Deanna McCord, Manager of the Residential Energy Efficiency Program of the Kentucky Housing Corporation, Reba and Jim Pierce, customers, Chris Schimmler, President of Envision Franklin County, Brent Swager, resident and customer, and Nancy and Richard Watkins, residents and customers. "We greatly appreciate the steps the Plant Board has taken to hire the Vermont Energy Investment Corporation to advise Frankfurt on energy efficiency programs to serve the Plant Board's customers. The development of such programs is very important to assist your customers to reduce their energy costs. This is especially true for low-income residents, but also for other residential, commercial, and industrial customers. We are grateful that FPB continues to provide some of the lowest electric rates in Kentucky, but low rates don't translate into low bills for many customers who live in poorly insulated inefficient homes. We are aware that many utilities across the country have achieved great success in helping their customers to reduce their energy use, lower their bills, make their homes more comfortable, and their business customers more profitable. We also know that energy efficiency has been proven to be the lowest-cost energy supply, and that effective efficiency programs can help the utility reduce their costs and keep rates down for all customers. As Frankfurt Plant Board customers, residents of Frankfurt and Franklin County, and members of community organizations, we urge you to commit funding for the coming budget year to begin implementation of energy efficiency programs. We understand that the Vermont Energy Investment Corporation has suggested a budget of $350,000 for the first year of programming, and we strongly encourage you to support funding at this level. It would be great if, after receiving the VEIC's recommendations, the Frankfurt Plant Board could proceed directly with the development of programs and make them available to your customers as soon as possible. Thank you again for beginning the process to develop energy efficiency programs for your customers."
Thank you, Andy. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? And Pierce not. Adam, have you had a chance to check, are there any web comments that would pertain to issues we'll be talking about today? I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that. You're saying David has one?
Yeah, David and Kathy, they were forwarded over to them. I don't know if we can circulate them to the board, or just one, I believe.
Okay. Well, would it be possible to just read that?
Yes, I mean, can we do that under this meeting, or... It's from a web comment, versus...
I see it as equivalent to public comment, and a person couldn't be here, so if it's something that pertains to an area that we'll be discussing or voting on today, it would be worth reading to share with the board.
Looks like we had a comment that came in today at 11:46 PM from Lisa Munixma. You might know that name better than me.
Muniska.
Muniska.
Yeah.
"Looks like a Wilkerson Boulevard resident. Subject is EV charging station and water bottle filling station. Dear FPB Directors, as the farmers' market continues to attract more visitors, the market welcome table is receiving more requests for a place to get water and fill water bottles. The pavilion area is an ideal spot for a public water fountain, convenient to people using Riverview Park, as well as those visiting the market. Thank you for your consider, for you considering this location as you discuss the possibility of new water fountains for the city. Franklin County Farmers Market Community Engagement Coordinator is her title."
Okay, thank you.
That is all we've received today.
Okay, good. So we have that comment that'll pertain to our later discussion. So I think we've covered that item, number three. We're ready to go on to item number four. "Consider approving a motion to request KYME Representative David Denton to make a motion in the June 28 KYME special board meeting that will be here in Frankfurt to engage a firm to generate an integrated resource plan. This is an industry best practice. Will it, it will inform member utilities on decisions concerning energy needs, demand estimates, and risk." Is there any discussion on this motion?
I'll bite. You know, I think it's really important we start, you know, doing this level of planning. You know, we're pretty far along with, you know, where things are with KYMEA, but we still have, you know, the agreements coming up in 2022. And, you know, without, you know, this level of detailed planning, it's not possible for us to have, you know, to be able to make appropriate decisions as we move forward. You know, as we've, you know, learned from the process to date, you know, we have, you know, not procured the most economic power supply. We have more power coming. There are significant... There are significant questions with, with load forecasts that's in front of us and we've got, you know, significant changes in front of us now with the, our transmission costs. And all of these things would have been things that would have been upfront and available to us to use as decision tools if we'd been going on, going through this process, you know, all along. And, you know, a couple of other points that I would make along that lines is, you know, when we first were given these portfolios, these components, the PPAs, they're in the portfolio now, you know, they were limited, you know, primarily to coal resources. And in Kentucky, you know, there wasn't any visibility to how that restriction on the contracts that we solicited for this initial portfolio was made. And further, you know, after some discussion in, in, you know, 2016 around, you know, the economics of wind and the economics of solar and gas, we were told at that time that, you know, none of those options were, you know, optimal, were the optimal economic choices. Subsequent to that, as the agency went out and looked at wind and, and solar contracts, you know, their responses back to us were that they were surprised by the level of economics and pleased with the low cost of, you know, the renewable options. And, you know, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid with, with doing the appropriate level of planning is we don't want, we don't want any surprises. We want to know about these things upfront. We want to look at what all the options are that are out there. We don't want to just pick and choose and have, you know, one contract here, one contract there. We want to look at the entire energy perspective and, and move forward. So I think it's really important that, you know, before we, you know, commit to any other longer-term relationship with KYMEA through the selection of PPAs, that we have that level of planning there so that we can have confidence that we're, you know, selecting the resources and the power supply options for our ratepayers that do recommend, that do represent the most economic options for us to move forward with.
Steve, you... No comment? Okay. Let's see. I think technically I made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess the only other comment I might make is that, you know, we've gotten, you know, I know I've said this a lot, but I'll say it again. You know, integrated resource planning is, you know, the industry standard everywhere for the level of due diligence that is necessary to properly demonstrate a responsible selection of power supply purchases. It's required by the state of Kentucky. It's required by most of the states in the United States. And it's hard to understand why, you know, this level of planning wasn't adopted by the agency. You know, we've heard, you know, conflicting reasons as to why that was from, it's precluded, it's precluded by the Model Procurement Code and because of the restrictions of that, that the agency can't perform an IRP. We've also heard that the agency did the same planning, they just didn't call it that, but we've not seen that level of planning. And we've also heard that, that it wasn't possible to do an integrated resource plan because we didn't have any resources to integrate, which is also not the case. So again, I would just really stress the importance of doing the proper level of planning so we know we're making the right decisions as we move forward.
And I would also like to add to that that OMU, who has been very active within KYMEA, they did their own, well, actually, they contracted it out, but they did an IRP, as did Henderson Company, well, a utility, which will not have a power source within the next year since the coal plant that they have been buying from is going to be closed down. So they're looking at where to go next, and the first thing they did was get an integrated resource plan. So they have some, some idea of, of direction. And neither of them were precluded by the procurement policy of, from getting an IRP, and it's something required by the Public Service Commission for all utilities in Kentucky that are co-ops or for profits. So I think it's an important aspect.
I guess I would throw in one more. You know, of all of the, you know, concerns that have been raised from the, the four independent agencies that have looked at, you know, the KYMEA contracts and organization, of all of the findings they've had, you know, the lack of the IRP process is, is, in my mind, the most significant. If we had that level of planning out there and had that level of transparency out there, a lot of the other concerns are mitigated to some extent. It doesn't mean that, we wouldn't necessarily pursue those, but, you know, having this level of planning and this level of transparency out that, out there mitigates the amount of damage. Those, those other concerns that were pointed out could impact us with.
So we'll go ahead and vote on this. Kathy, could you please call it by member?
Member Mason?
No.
Member Ludwig?
No.
Member Hayal?
No.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Before we move on, I guess, I would like, and I should ask before we voted, but, you know, I guess I'd like some feedback from our staff. You know, Vin, is there a reason that we shouldn't be doing an integrated resource plan?
Mr. Baldwin, you're very mature that I believe that they have an integrated resource plan. The ideas they've done should respond to you all, as the board and their documents that they did such in quite a bit detail. So I think it's a matter of your opinion that they haven't done it, as they have. I'm not here to argue with the board about it, Mr. Baldwin.
I really wasn't looking to argue. I just was, you know, curious about that, that perspective. You know, I've not seen, you know, any, any information that shows a comparison of different power supplies or any of those things that we would normally find in an integrated resource plan. I don't see any demand side data. It's taken us a long time. Sure.
I really don't want, as I said earlier, when I first got on this board, you, you've put the staff person in a position of perhaps contradicting the majority of the board. And that's not someplace I think the staff needs to be, particularly in a public meeting. So if you need, those questions really need to be asked after the meeting because publicly, I'm sure Vin doesn't want to be in a position where he's taking one side, as he said, one side or the other in a public meeting. And I don't think staff should have, should be in that position.
But I do think that the whole purpose of open meeting laws is that these discussions are for the public to understand.
Yeah, the discussions among the board members, but to put, we've made a decision, and now you've asked a question that potentially puts Vin in a position of having to choose one side or the other in that discussion, in that argument. And that's an unfair position to put a staff person in. So if you have a question for Vin, ask him after the meeting. That's, that's no, there's no open record law that says you, as an individual board member, cannot go to staff and say, what about this? What about that?
Well, that's a good point. However, from another standpoint, it's a technical question. It's a...
No, we made a decision, and he asked his opinion on a decision that the board made. And now you're putting Vin in the uncomfortable position of saying, like, is this side or that side? And, and that's a no-win situation for Vin.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually agree with Steve. And I would actually withdraw the question because I should have asked that before we actually voted to it and got, got some feedback from staff. But I do agree, the board has decided, and I do think it's unfair to put Vin on the spot to pick sides.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
But I do still think it's, it's an important conversation that we should have had, but we're kind of passive at this point.
Yep. Okay. Item number six. Steve, do you want to go ahead and handle this one since this is your suggestion? Did I?
We're on five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read, I read it wrong. Number five, I didn't mean to skip, but it, it is an area that you were looking into, Steve, and maybe you'd want to present that.
Basically, the three things I have initially were the oversight, and I've passed you around a copy of, the bold part is the motion and the other is just the rationale behind it. And those things were, as we started talking about the budget, that David started talking about the general provisions earlier, there was no role the board played as in, no mandatory role, no role the board had to, an oversight role of approval of amendments to the budget. So the, basically, the first one is saying that any transfers or amendments above $10,000 shall be reported to the board for informational oversight purposes. Any budget transfer over $40,000 must be reported and approved to the, by the board. The third, the second one was, any monies realized from the sale of surplus property shall be reported to the board for informational oversight purposes. And that again gives you, you see the rationales that I put behind it. Number three, with any unspent monies from any area of, shall be reported to the board at the end. So I'll put those in a motion for what it's worth.
So are we doing this as a consensus item, all three?
If you can do them individually, or I don't, it's up to the chair.
On the second one, about surplus sales, does that work? Don't we get that every month anyhow? Is that in our financials every month?
It may be in your financials, but you don't, you aren't, you, you can say whether you sold a vehicle or 10 vehicles per month. All I'm doing is highlighting things that, that you wouldn't see unless you were really digging into it and asked the question, this number is different than the last number. What's the difference between those two numbers? It's the sale of surplus property. That's how you would know.
I had a question along those lines. I wondered what all of this is already in the financials that maybe just could be pointed out when you're giving the financial report every month?
Yes, ma'am, I can answer that. We provide in the start, let's talk about, now, the amendment side of it, on number one. We do not transfer money between divisions. We've taken a, a, a pretty strong stance that each division should have rates set to cover the operations, debt service, reserve levels needed, capital, I should say, debt service for each one. The idea is if you are a electric-only customer, then you pay for electric. If you're a water-only customer, which we have some in this room, then you only pay for what, what takes to run the water system. So we don't cross between divisions. It's not uncommon possibly to have some, within capital, movement within capital, that is, infrastructure projects. But number one, I mean, we can do that, no, no problem. The sale of surplus property, like, if you were to look at our financials, you would see a gain or loss on sale of assets. That's where you would see gain or loss on the sale of any assets for the year. So we can bring that to the board's attention every month if you'd like to have it today. So that is something that occurs today, and we can give more information if needed. Number three, unspent money from any area at the end of fiscal year. I mean, we provide budget-to-actual financial information month over month, but we can make more of a point to point that out. If we're doing better than our budget, that means we're, have better, either more revenue or have had cost containment and control of expenses that we're going to produce more cash than we expected. It is worth noting to our, to anybody watching and to the board that every year we reset, if we had more unspent money, whether it was less capital spent or less operations, that we would just start a brand-new, fresh cash balance, and we're off and running for the year. So just because we have a better performance in one year doesn't mean we increase the expenditures allowed by the board's approval. We don't, say we had $10,000 more in surplus sales than we expected, that doesn't mean we have an increase in $10,000 more of expenses that we can spend. The board sets the budget, we stick to the budget. So we can do whatever the board likes, of course. If you'd like to add this in as an official thing, or we can just make these points up as we go each month. Either way, I guess we'd be talking about it each month, so.
Well, to your point, Don, one of the things I say, one of the things David said, well, we can do these things, we can do it. He doesn't have to do it. David could be somewhere else next week working, and we could have a new whatever, director, GM, whatever. And that person may not want to share. So right now, let's take the person that does not want to do that. We have passed a budget today, and based on the provisions in, in David, David had at the beginning of his budget, he can move monies from one area to the other on day two of the, now, he may not, he's not going to do, he's not going to do that. But he could move some monies, if he wanted to, into other things on day two without the approval of the board. Significant amounts of money, without telling you and without your approval. So the first one is merely just the information, so you get an understanding of what happens in the budget over a given year. Right now, in the, in what we get, in what we got in the presentation, and David and I have talked about this, so we, it's not something that I've, haven't said to him. Right now, we get the financials, and we go through the financials, and that is truly the outside of the house, if I use that analogy. You are seeing the outside of the house when you tell me the level of income you have, the level of expenses, the cash. I need to see inside of that house a little bit, what makes up those expenses? What makes up the actions going on in, in different things? So I'm asking, I had $10,000, it can be $15,000, I've just put a number there. When you start making budget transfers, tell me for informational purposes. It's going to help me to understand your plight better because now I see the pressure points within the year that are causing you to move monies places. Now, if it's a significant amount of money, I'd like to make a, have an approval on that because if, if it's an amount of money that causes some public reaction to it, and I don't have any thought or any knowledge of it, and I didn't have any oversight on it, and I could have, then I'm sitting out there without some valid excuse. So those are the reasons for the, the informational purposes on that, the approval on monies above a number. The second one, on the realized surplus property. You're right, David said, you can look at the numbers and see it there. But if he gave you a sheet that says, we sold 10 pickups today, this, this, this month, or whatever the reporting period is, could be quarterly on those. 10 pickups or this equipment and that equipment, it gives you some sense of what they're doing with, and selling. It also gives you a sense of their needs. It also gives you more insight to pose other questions as it relates to their budget. So all these things are not, these things are not impeding them in doing things. It's just giving you the information and more understanding of what's going on. So therefore, when budget time comes again, you know they sold X amount of this, X amount of that. You know they transferred this amount of money and that amount of money. It gives you more insight into what's inside of that budget house that I'm using. So that's, that's, this is not impeding them. This is just giving more information to the board members as it relates to what's going on.
So that was on number two. And on number three?
Just one, two, and three.
Oh, okay. On number three, any money left at the end of the year should be reported to the board. What do we do now in different areas where there's, say, VEIC? We didn't spend $120,000 we had allocated. We spent 40 or something.
So like, that's a good example. The energy efficiency firm we've hired to create a, energy efficiency programs and different metrics to measure whether it's effective or not. The bud, we budgeted $120,000 this current fiscal year, '17, '18. What we have to make is estimates on what we think we'll spend. I do not know that we've received an invoice from them, but we've assumed that we'll, we will, we asked them for a year-end progress invoice through June 30 so we can book that to get our accurate records for our annual audit, which, for those watching, we are required by statute to get annual audit and have had clean audits for years and years. So we've budgeted $20,000, I should say. We show that we're going to spend 20, and we'll roll over $100,000 as recorded a year to be spent next year. The board approved 120, but we will, that will not hit our books until this current coming year, '17, '18. So we have 100 budgeted for VEIC.
So I think what you're saying is we knew it was going to roll over, and it is rolled over.
Correct.
And so it, it already happened without, technically, I suppose, without the board's knowledge?
No, it's completely, if you have any contracts, for example.
Well, how would it be different from what's written here, is what I'm trying to determine?
We, we report it, like, for example, in the budget for the company-wide and for electric, water, and telecom. electric, water, and telecom, we show what we estimate to be our beginning cash balance, and we show what we think will be every year forward, and we showed it what we thought every year backwards. So we prove, show it today, so we can just, if this is official, we'll just know that, we'll make sure to ask it, or you can ask anytime, or you can stop by or call, or however.
It's also called out, there's a line, I don't know if I'm going to find it exactly, but.
I'm just trying to figure out how it's different from what, how this is different from.
Well, the difference is, I'm asking for much greater detail than he's talking about. He's telling, you, you gave him a, one of the highlights, one of those signature items or one of the big items that money was carried for.
Right.
I'm talking about if there's, excuse me, in the cable, there's, there's money left over in the personnel line, or there's money left over in the operating line. I, I want to know what's been left over. It just gives me a, a sense of how they're spending, how, how efficiently they've been, inefficient they've been. It's just giving me a broader picture, a more detailed picture of their operation within their budget, not looking at the outside. I can see the outside. So I'm talking about any unspent monies that were budgeted.
I agree, I think all this would be really good information, good detail to have.
It just gives you more, more things to work with.
So it sounds like, Mr. Mason, we provide a budget-to-actual statement each month to the board. Would more, from, would you like us to go line by line, discuss why the budget-to-actual is what it is?
I'm not asking you to report.
Because we have that to you today.
I, I'd just like to, to see it.
Okay.
But, but isn't, you know, in your analogy of the inside of the house, isn't the inside of the house what's always in the back of the documents that you give us every month, that has all that line-by-line stuff?
That's just the check registers. So it doesn't actually show compared to budget.
Okay.
It does show the detail of every expenditure made, but not necessarily compared to budget by account.
So we provide to the board today, a budget-to-actual statement, so you can see where we expect it to be, where we are, plus prior year, exactly where we were a year ago, how it looked budget-to-actual. And we also supplies a full check register for our two main operating accounts, so you can see every check written, and a reconciliation of all cash, too. One of the biggest things, if you're looking, if you truly wanted a truly detailed audit, was to look through your complete cash audit. An audit of just your financials based on metrics and different selections and samples is good, it's what's required, but we provide for the board a full cash statement every month of every cash spent. Mr. Mason, I think, sounds like, I think we can provide what you, what you would like, more information and explanation. I think what we give is good for the average board member that wants to understand where we're at, but if you want more detail, I can make sure that we can give you more detail as to why budget-to-actual is like it is.
If I could use the check register that you're speaking of, it is really detailed. But to make that, and I'm not asking for this, but to make that check register tell me more, I'd want it by, by budget unit, by organization unit, by individual units, where those expenditures were. And that tells me where it's being spent, which gives me a, now I can see from the check register, because most of it's in areas, I'm, I'm just asking for kind of like a summary of things that, that jump out at you, that tells you what goes on. You have to search, or if you know how to look at the budget, this, you can find it, but you have to search for it. It's not something that is just hitting you.
Okay. So I think we had a motion, and the question came up of whether we're going to vote on these things individually or as one, and so we didn't get a second, and we didn't resolve that question.
I'm, I'm comfortable voting for all of them as one, and now a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor with going ahead with Steve's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carried. Item number six. Again, this is Steve's project, so if you want to take that one, Steve?
Again, what I've, what I've, what I've suggested here is a pay raise that's more in line with where we are. We talk about the ratepayers paying, ratepayers pay these monies. And ratepayers are getting, I guess, the state's getting zero, I guess, the city, I think, is getting probably around two, the county may be getting around two, and I'm just trying to stay in line with them, because that's where the ratepayers look at us, or look at, at the plan board and says, we're paying all of these bills. And that's just being consistent with them, with what's going, what the rates are in Frankfurt. So I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, it does appear that we have a second.
I would like to comment on it, though.
Because I'm kind of in a hard spot with it, because I, I agree with the overall sentiment, but I guess my concern is, is that it's, it's, it's too, it's too broad of a tool, because I think that, you know, while a certain number of our resources are competitive in the Frankfurt area, others of our resources are competitive in the broader region. And so, some of our roles, we might be getting ourselves in trouble if, if, if we're not competitive with that broader area. So, I like, I like the direction, and I like the turn, but I would, I would like to see a more detailed adjustment, to make sure we reflect retention needs of those highly competitive roles.
Well, obviously, those kinds of things come into play, you have, there are often maybe people that may want to leave if this, this was approved. But, at some point, the plan board needs to start looking inward. Every one of the rest of these action items that are budget items is coming from the fund balance. And, and I use the analogy to somebody about being on a fixed income with a huge 401K out here, that I can draw from whenever I want to draw from it. And now I'm picking and choosing to draw from this 401K based on what I want, and that's, that's, I just don't think that's a good thing, because we have this fund balance out here, and anytime we want to do anything, we're going to go to the fund balance. And I use the tangible thing as a big thing, again, for the plan board members, that nobody blinked on spending over a million dollars, because I got, I have this huge 401K setting out here with money in it that's not going to make me feel it. And 4.4% increases, we don't feel it. So we don't think about it. If I, if my money's tight, I'm thinking about whether I'm eating at McDonald's or Longhorn. I'm thinking about that, but if my money's.
You shouldn't think about eating at home.
Yeah. That's another story, I won't go there, I might get in trouble. You know, but if, if my money's not tight, I, I'm going to some fine restaurant in Lexington, I'm not thinking about that. We, we, our money is good, as David has done, he's been a good steward of our money. But every one of these other action items, if we, if we approve them, is coming from, excuse me, coming from our fund balance, and none of us in this room has done any analysis to determine any other place that it can come. And that, when something, when that analysis is not done, it tells me we have a lot of money. So, all I was doing was looking at places to, to find monies, bringing salaries raises to be consistent with Franklin County, because ratepayers see what they're going to get, and ratepayers are going to complain about it when they see their rate increases, as the paper said the other day, yet today, I think, about rates. So we're going to hear those things, but yet, we'll find monies to do these things, perhaps.
But, but Steve, our only rate increase is in water and in cable retransmission fees. We have no rate increase in electric, we have no rate increase in internet, we have no rate increase in telephone, we have no rate increase in security. And, and so when we're looking at, at employees' raises, it's, you know, the, the increase in rate in water is because of the reservoir. And, and so, I think to argue about cutting employee salaries and tie that in to rates.
I'm not cutting the salaries.
Well, okay, not, well, if, if people aren't getting a raise, then it's a cut, to me. I mean, it, yeah, you're right.
They're getting a raise.
It's not, but, I, I just think that, I, I agree with what Walt said, we need to look at the bigger picture, and, and the state is not in competition with other utilities the way we are with our employees.
I think that's debatable, but I'm not going to belabor the point.
And I guess, you know, I'm actually inclined to support your motion, if there was a way we could have some sense of how that would impact those highly competitive roles that we have in our, in our, in our agency, that we have a hard time retaining employees.
Well, you know, and, and I think that's a valid point, but if you're going to be paralyzed by that thought, you'll never do anything. So I mean, so I mean, all I would say, what if you had a $5 million fund balance, and now you want to start doing things? Where, where, where would your mind be as it relates to your decision process and be, making be, if it was a $5 million fund balance out there, and now you're, you know, the 4.4 was out there and the 2.75, where would you, where, where, where would your mindset be with that? And that, that's my point right there.
Well, I'll give you your second.
Okay. What I liked to add was a couple things, in that to do an overall blanket change.
Well, the vote's over, because they, it's already been voted, hasn't it?
Well, it died for a lack of.
We don't have a second.
Didn't have a second.
Okay.
Yep. Unemployment is extremely low, and so it's hard to get employees in certain fields. To do an overall blanket, no increase that was projected, I think is a disservice, which is also, I think, what some other people were saying about, we have specialized workers in certain areas, where I think the most recent example was in line workers, that we raised their pay so that we stopped losing them, so we could keep an intact department. And that this would work against some departments to more detriment than others, and that's something that should be studied.
Well, and we have a compensation policy of which this is part. I think if we want to revisit the compensation policy, that's something we need to do, not today.
I think it's due for review, is that what I'm saying?
You know.
But I think it is due for, you know. What troubles me is that we deviate from this plan, we're pulling the rug out from under employees who we've told, and this is the plan, this is what we're going to be doing going forward, and then, last, we pull the rug out from under, and I, you know, that's just no, no thing to do.
Okay. So we had a motion, a failure to get a second, I think it's ten.
I'll give you a second.
Oh, you are? Okay, we do have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah.
We already declared that the motion failed for lack of a second.
Oh.
Oh, did we actually get that far? I tried to interrupt before we got to that point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me ask if I'm correct.
Well, I wrote no second thought, so, before he spoke of it.
So.
Somebody could make, a motion could be made again.
Okay.
If anybody wishes to do so.
Okay, does anyone wish to make the motion again?
Well, I, I'd first like to ask the board, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, if, if your, if your votes are what they are, I don't, you know, I guess I couldn't, I know two votes, I don't know.
The morale of the board is affected by something as small as this.
What if we said that we will look at the compensation policy in the future?
The compensation policy does not ban the board to a prescribed pay rate. It's just a plan.
It's a plan.
It's, it's not, but, but the economy changes, localities change, things in, in the localities change, so, but every employee group that can get it done gets a salary survey done, if it's advantageous to them to do it. The state police has theirs in statute. So, because they, they, they want someone to consider a pay raise for them every year, and they, it's considered, and they don't, they may not get it, but it's considered because the statute says that. I'll offer it again.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments? Kathy, do you want to call this by member, please?
Member Mason?
Yes.
Member Ludwig?
No.
Member Hayo?
No.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
No.
We know it's two yeses.
Okay. Item number seven. Consider approving a one-time water customer, customers as of June 30th, 2019, to be paid based on each customer's usage and not to exceed a combined total of $40,000 from the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. Steve, this again was your concept.
I was drawn, because there's no money to pay for it.
Okay, withdrawn. Okay, number eight. Consider approval of $350,000 for energy efficiency program. This is something I've been very involved with, and we have a study going on, we'll have an update report in, at the July board meeting, and a conclusion to the project in September, both falling, of course, after we approve this budget. And I would like to see the money in the budget so that we can move ahead with this. I did send an email out just this morning, looking at the, the question that I had brought up in the past, which is that, or not question, but information, that Kentucky overall has very low energy rates, but high individual utility bills due to poor insulation, inefficient use of electricity. So, our customers see higher overall costs, even though we have lower rates, and that something like energy efficiency would help with this problem. We have the letter that was submitted by a number of people, individuals and groups here in Frankfurt, saying, you know, energy efficiency is something we need in all classes, especially in economically challenged customers.
I have a question, I'm updated on this, refreshed on it. What, what, if anything, is in the proposed 18-19 budget on this subject?
We currently have none, and the reasoning was that the Vermont, the VEIC group that's doing the study is going to come back in September and provide their findings, the plan, structures, potential costs, potential paybacks, all the questions that were in the, that we're tasked with. And so, the thought was to wait until that time, the board can amend the budget the same way they approved the budget. And just because the money's in there, just like most things, we come back to the board with requests for, just because it's budget, doesn't mean we go and take off down the road. If there's something the board needs to approve, we would come back to the board, so your answer is zero right now.
So it's not in the budget, but depending on what they come up with and propose to us, we can amend the budget. Is that what you're telling me?
And that even if.
And this is a big item, $350,000, this is a big.
Well, what I failed to mention there is that the payback is considered three to one, so we invest $350,000, and the payback would be a million, roughly, and these are rough numbers.
It's a matter of timing here, is what I'm hearing.
That's true. Yep, and that if it is in the budget, then we would, of course, approve whatever we plan, we decide to go with, approve the use of the money, but it's, one hurdle has already jumped.
Can we just back up a second? We really don't have a motion in the second to have discussions, so, you know, we get a little ahead of ourselves.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
So I made the motion for, to put $350,000 in there as energy efficiency, Walt has seconded, so now we're legal.
Thank you. I thought it was interesting what you sent us this morning. I know you chose Vermont, New York, and Minnesota to, to show how Kentucky's average consumption is so much higher than them, but if you look at the, the rest of what you sent us, they have it broken down by geographical areas, and Kentucky is part of east, south, central, and Kentucky's average monthly consumption is 1,121 kilowatt hours, Alabama is 1,214, Mississippi's 1,203, Tennessee's 1,238, you know, South Carolina's 1,155. I, I just think that when we're looking at average consumption, and you're looking I, I just think that when we're looking at average consumption and you're looking at states like New York and Minnesota and Vermont, average consumption isn't really telling us anything as far as energy efficiency because they aren't air conditioning like we are, they're probably not using electric to heat their homes as many people here do, and, and so it's sort of an apples and orange comparison, and for our geographical area, Kentucky is, you know, less than any other state in the east, south, central area for average monthly consumption.
Well, I agree that it was just a small window, but it was comparing areas with more challenging climates than we have, and I think that was the point.
Also, I think, you know, I think you're right, I think the, I think in my mind, there's not really a discussion here about average consumption, the, the discussion is about average bills, what you're actually paying, and, you know, the, I don't know, I've not seen what you've got there, so I'm not sure what's in that, but, you know, if you look at the data that comes from the federal government, you know, Kentucky has, you know, some of the lowest rates, but some of the highest bills, and notably, if you look at the state, I believe, I believe it was New Mexico and it used to be the highest kilowatt hour in the continental U.S., they also had, they also are the state with the lowest bill. So it's not, in my mind, it's not about average consumption, it's about what the customers are actually paying at the end of the month. And I think that, that's, that's the benefit we have from the efficiency, so if we're actually getting a more value out of the energy they are buying, the bills are going to go down. And I agree, but average consumption is going to be apples to apples because how many people are there, what types of heating, all that, I think you have to look at what they're actually paying, you know, what their, what their average year, what their average monthly bill is, and Kentucky's are high, I'm, I'm going to miss the number, but it's in the 30s, you know, we're 34th, 37th in the United States for, for highest bill.
I would prefer to wait till the, to their suggestions, recommendations come back so we can see what they are and whether we want to support them. I, I mean, I don't know why we need to put the money there, now the money is going to be where it's at right now, so it, it's not going anywhere, the money isn't, so why not wait until we see what they bring back and see what and how much, or if all of it, we want to support?
Well, I, I see that point, but also I think by having it in the budget, it signals to the community that this is something that we see as serious, this is something we want to do, and I think back from the hearing that we had earlier this month, talking about water rates and costs, I think there was some misunderstanding of the increase, but what those people were saying was, we feel that we've been overlooked, we, we don't think that people care about us, and this would be a way for the Frankfurt plant board to demonstrate that we see energy efficiency as an important asset to the community and that by having it in the budget, we'd still be deciding whether we're going to spend it or not, but that we're making a positive statement.
And the point that we're committed to lowering, you know, their energy bills.
Well, you're lowering it by them being more efficient, you're not lowering their rate, and I'm not, I don't have, I don't have any problem with doing that. My point is, the money is sitting there right now, so why do we need to allocate it to that, to that right now without a plan in front of us when it'd be just as easy when the plan comes in to allocate the money then? The money's not going anywhere, it's, it's there right now. I'd just rather see what the plan is before I commit my vote to, to amount of money that I don't know what it's going for, really, I know where it's going, I don't know what it's going for. And to the point of the rate payer, eighty, eighty percent of the rate payers won't be aware of what this is anyway, outside of a fully developed publication, I guess, that's going out that says this and says that, and I, I would say some of those would, would won't, won't know either, but again, why commit the money now, we don't have a plan in front of us, the money's not going anywhere, it'll be there whenever that plan gets there, commit the money when we get the plan, then we'll know exactly how much to commit to the plan.
I mean, to me, you don't, you don't buy a car that you haven't seen or driven, and we haven't seen their, their report yet.
We wouldn't actually be buying it. It's like we'd be putting it on reserve, that it would be available to us, that it would be something that we can reasonably get to.
We can reasonably get to it in one meeting, when we come in, someone makes a motion to commit however much money to that plan. Whenever that plan comes, that same meeting, we can make a motion to release those monies for this plan.
It's not the plan first.
But I think there is an additional step to amend the budget, is that accurate?
But that's just a motion, right? I mean, so all we have to do is make the motion to amend the budget for X amount of dollars for an energy efficiency study.
Implementation.
Implementation, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, here's my thought on it, is I'm, I'm inclined to go ahead and allocate it, because I think it, it sends a, a message to the rate payers that we understand that their costs are high and we're trying to, you know, move in that direction, it doesn't commit us to buy anything before we know what it is, and the number that we have in front of us now is, is from the agency that's doing the analysis for us and they, this is their recommendation based on similar sized cities implementing similar sized programs, and then we would tailor that, you know, once we, once, once we get that, that, that final report back, but I think it's important that we go ahead and demonstrate a commitment and, you know, move in that direction.
Well, there are two other issues for me with this. One, part of the benefit of being in KYMEA is it spreads the cost around, so if we hold off, we can maybe have KYMEA participate in it, and then second, I read an article in the Courier-Journal back, I guess it was in December, talking about how LG&E, KU is eliminating their energy efficiency programs because they're no longer cost effective, and so it just makes me, and I don't know the particulars of, of what their programs were or how or why they have deemed them not cost effective, but I, it makes me pause a little bit to think about us putting $350,000 in the budget for an energy efficiency implementation that A, we don't know what we're talking about implementing, and B, someone like KU has decided to no longer do energy efficiency programs because it's not cost effective.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of comments on that. First, to take the last one, LG&E-KU may have backed off on some things, but I was listening to the radio yesterday, on Saturday, and they had an ad there that said, was specifically focused to businesses and said, hey, we're ready to partner with you to help you with energy efficiency to reduce your energy usage. It was an ad on the radio, and I believe that LG&E-KU's energy efficiency program was directed by the Public Service Commission, so maybe there was some change going back farther there. The other comment I have on KYMEA is that we are 50% of the KYMEA cost, and so if and when KYMEA feels that this is something that they're interested in, we would be paying half the cost and not having equal control in whatever direction it goes. I do not feel that currently that, that this is one of their priorities, and so it could be years before they get to it.
And all that time is time that, you know, any, any period of time that we're not reducing our customers' rates, they're never going to get that money back, so that year, two year, or five year, however long it takes to get into the point that you have efficiency measures in place to allow them to reduce their bills, they're never getting those dollars back.
But we're not reducing their rate.
No, we're reducing their bills.
If they participate and if, well.
They're speculative.
Well, no, I believe that we actually have industry data from our agency that demonstrates the, the payback on the investment in energy efficiency, and we would see those, those payback, that payback, that was, that payback data in, you know, the final studies when they give them to us.
I want to say.
Our grows late, can we call the, call, let's call the action, I have on this, I agree how it's going.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please call this by member.
Member Mason?
No.
Member Ludwig?
No.
Member Hayo?
No.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Okay, motion failed. Number nine, consider approval of $15,000 for three water fountains in public areas to be determined by working with the city to, oh, determined and if the city agrees to maintain these fountains. So this is a program that we had in the past fiscal year, successful, put in three water fountains, Juniper Hills, downtown St. Clair Mall and east, I'm sorry, City View Park, I'm sorry, Lake View Park, I keep looking for the lake out there, elusive, but.
It's across the street.
Okay.
On Georgetown Road.
Well, the county fair is coming up, it'll be utilized, it's July 18th through 22nd, and any, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I commend my colleagues for thinking of this water fountain stuff, I think it's a good, good, I found something I can support.
Okay, great. Do you want to make a motion to do three more?
Okay. Well, are we ready for a motion? I'll move that we approve $15,000 to, for three water fountains in public areas to be determined and if the city agrees to maintain the fountains.
Second.
And second, and we did have the one public comment of the coordinator for the farmer's market, very much in favor of this project, so go ahead and call for the vote.
Do we have a second?
Oh, yes, we did. Is there any further discussion, I should ask? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, number 10, consider funds for continuing education and travel expenses for the board.
So we talked about the sum at the last meeting, I think David got us a budget together of 17.5 that would allow the board members to attend educational conferences and online conferences to, you know, expand our knowledge of the, of the industry that we're, that we're regulating, so I would make a motion that we allocate 17,500 in this fiscal year for board continuing education.
Motion second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you had nodded or something, but we have one dissenting vote, so motion carried with four members. Number 11, consider a study to design a large-scale photovoltaic installation on FPB property or on buildings.
So we talked about the sum in the last meeting, and I went out and did some back-of-the-napkin numbers to get some sense of what that would be, and looking at the 26 date, 2016 data from the water treatment plant, it consumed a little over 7 million kilowatt hours in the year to build an array to offset that, would take up about 30 acres of land, and so that would put us in a six-megawatt array to generate that. The notable thing about it is that the construction costs for anything over a megawatt are in line with all utility scale costs, so we would, you see LCOE numbers in the four cents, five cents kind of a range. If you go with the low end of the construction costs, I, I could find, that's a 6.6-year payoff for the construction of the array, and if you go with the median numbers, it's a 9.1-year payoff of the array, and the arrays have a 25-plus year lifespan, so after that payoff, you know, the, the plant, it would free up, you know, approaching three-quarters of a million dollars out of the, out of the water treatment plant's budget every year. And, you know, there was maybe one other comment I would throw in there. Oh, and then the other, the other factors that aren't included in there, we wouldn't, is we would also save over the construction of a remotely placed array by not having transmission costs, not having line loss costs, not having administration costs from KYMEA, and then we would also benefit some from the, the peaking offset from the generation time of the solar array. And again, the, the motion is, is only to, to do a study to get, you know, hard numbers on there so we can make a decision as a board of what financially makes sense to move forward with there, and I don't, I don't even think we need to, I assume this is something we could just hand to the electric department, I wouldn't think we'd even, we might leave it to their discretion if they wanted to have an outside consultant help them with it, but, you know, I think these are numbers that we can develop in-house. So I guess the motion would be direct staff to develop the finances for significant solar array to offset the, the agency use of electricity and to report back to the board and at their discretion potentially amend for outside consulting assistance.
I'll second that, any discussion?
So explain that motion again, because I know I need to listen to the word.
Okay, sorry. To direct staff to do an analysis, to give us the financials on building a significant array to offset the agency's power use. The example I use is water treatment, but, you know, we could look at our potential based on what we have for land, what we can build, costs, payback, that type of.
So this motion is not, is not committing us to do a study of a, to design a large-scale photo?
It's, my motion would be that we do the initial work to know whether we want to move forward with any design work or, or where that next step is. This is just to get all the finances in front of us so we can make an educated decision.
By staff.
I think by staff, yeah, I think, I expect Vin has folks on staff that can do this work, or put, put words in Vin's mouth, but, and the other, the other amendment I made to it is that if staff feels like they need outside consulting help, they can come back for a, for a budget amendment to add that.
Ah, that's the part where I don't, I, I don't want to commit money, I don't want to commit money.
And, and my motion right now doesn't commit any money.
But if they go back to get consultants, if they have the ability, go out and get a consultant.
No, 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 but my, my, my comment was that they could come back to the board at that time and ask for an amendment if they felt like they needed to get external consulting assistance.
How much staff time is going to be involved in doing this? I, I know I'm putting you on the spot there, Vin.
I mean, I don't know if you'd come in, how much debate is going on after and redesign and redo, I, I don't know, I don't have any answer for you on how much to, if this is what the board wants to do, we'll do it.
I mean, to put these numbers together took me about 15 minutes on Sunday, so.
And we do have a, a similar study that was done by OMU to look at putting in their own solar, and that could be a model that, it, it's a couple of years old at this point and some things have changed, but there is equivalent type of work that's been done that would be an easy way to look at it.
Can we table this and maybe come back at our next meeting, which probably is going to be, is going to be next week, hopefully or not, but.
Yeah.
To allow you to get with Vin and David and Steve kind of, because I don't want to put a burden that, as I said earlier in the meeting, I don't want to put a burden on, on them that they don't want to say they can't do it right now, they can't do it within, you know, some reasonable time that you want.
Well, this would be to, it's, I guess we're talking about the fiscal budget, so it would be within the next year.
You don't have any money.
Yeah, just a director for the year, it's not.
So that's, we can come back at the next meeting after you get with Vin and maybe Vin can say, I can have, I can do this, I can not do this, I can do, have X amount of hours I can commit to this.
I mean.
It gives us, you know, it gives us somewhat of an idea what.
Well, I think the question here, though, is, we're the board and do we think this is an important step to offset some of our own electric uses, especially the water treatment plant, that their largest single cost item is energy? Is it something we want to give to as priority as a board?
Well, the point, I, I understand your point, but their main job is to make sure that the utility services are delivered to Frankfurt in an efficient manner.
And our, our goal, okay, I'm sorry, I grew up in a big family.
I understand that too, and all I'm trying to make sure of is that he, that Walt and Vin get together to see if he has sufficient time to devote to that within a reasonable amount of time, because Walt, I'm sure, wants it back pretty soon, to do that without getting in. Walt, I'm sure, wants it back pretty soon, to do that without getting in his other day-to-day activities. I'm just saying, they can get together, see what they can work out together, bring it back to the next meeting of the board, and now you have a pretty good idea. When we ask, well, Vin, can you do this, well, we can do this with, you know, I can do this within this amount of time, I can do it with X amount of time, I don't have the expertise perhaps to do it. He can, he can give a reasonable answer if he has time to sit with you and see what, what, you know, really, what you want to do, and how, the scope of what you really want to do.
I think, if, if we had a few months, we could come back with obviously a first-level try, and see, that would eliminate some things. I mean, the first conversation obviously is what land do we have available, and what's suitable and not, and then some back-of-the-napkin costs and things like that. So I mean, you know, if we have a few months, we can develop something like that and bring that back to the board, and then see where the board wants to go from there. And if it was more in-depth, then we'd take more months, or whatever, or even to the point of a consult.
Assuming there's no costs here involved, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, just a tad. Last, in our last meeting, when that was brought up, Ms. Roney said she didn't really think, ah, I don't want to get it wrong, do you know what I'm talking about? That there was a pump that you said drew so much electricity that you didn't think solar was really suitable, or am I way off base somewhere?
I've just got seven very large electric motors, and I need to rely on four of those for 16 hours' worth of production. If I don't have that reliability for those 16 hours, for those four pumps, I'm not going to be able to treat water, and I'm not going to be able to pump it out.
Sure.
So my concern is on the reliability.
And the solar wouldn't affect the reliability negatively at all. It's not like you would connect the panel directly to a pump, and it would only run when the sun was on. The panel would be part of our portfolio of energy, and when the sun's shining, that energy would defer our overall usage. When it's not shining, it would still be part of our overall usage, so there's zero impact to reliability. Potentially a positive impact, but there's certainly no negative impact.
But I would think that would figure into a cost-benefit ratio there.
No, just the normal way you would hook it up, doesn't have any reliability downside.
So the normal grid would take over whenever it isn't producing?
Right, I understand that.
So it doesn't affect reliability?
But, but when you're talking, I thought when you were giving your numbers here, that would have been nice if we'd had that before the meeting.
This is just to work on those numbers.
That it was a cost savings by having solar panels to us, that therefore we're not spending that money on power.
That's right.
But if the panels aren't producing what the water treatment plant needs, then we're still having to buy that power, so then that affects a cost-benefit ratio of having the electric panels, or the, you know, solar panels.
The way you look at it, the way you look at it is, is, in those calculations I talked about, you know, the, the water treatment plant, you know, consumed, you know, 7,207,200 kilowatt-hours in 2016. So you size the array such that in your level of the country, in your area of the country, the amount of sun exposure it gets, provides at least that much energy over the course of the same year. And that way you've sized it to offset that amount of energy. You're never directly taking the power, the actual electron from the solar panel and sending it to the pump, right? So you're looking at, and that's how you actually measure the cost and the benefit of it, is look at, look at it in that yearly production window, not in any particular hour or moment.
Another thing is, I have to think that we would get our solar power more efficiently from KYMEA.
Actually, no, it would cost, if, if, if the information bears out, which it looks like it does, anything over a megawatt, the construction costs are equivalent, we would only have additional costs from getting it from KYMEA, because we would have transmission fees, we would have line loss, and we would also have administration fees.
It's going to cost a boot of money to get into the solar panel construction business out there, to any scale at all.
Well, we're spending it either way, on the power conduct, on the power consumption or on the solar.
Right, but still, I raise the issue of, I'm not convinced that this is more efficient than getting it through KYMEA.
And that's part of what we'd get out of, out of the numbers we're trying to get here.
No money involved.
No money.
No money committed, no, no consultant obligated.
This is an internal analysis. So, we've had plenty of discussion, we have a motion to do, are we calling it a study or doing an analysis?
Initial analysis, I think Vin understands where we're going, so I think we're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, maybe we should call this individually, please. Go ahead and call it.
Member Mason?
Can we start from the...
Yes.
Member Ludwig?
Uh, no.
Member Hale?
No.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Red?
Yes. Okay, motion to do analysis has passed. Number 12, consider a partnership with the city, county, the tourism office, and the chamber, or some combination of those, for an electric vehicle recharge station to be located in a public area of downtown Frankfurt.
And my thought around this were twofold, you know, one, it gives us another avenue to be able to sell one of our products, electricity, but two, it also, and which is where, the next, which was where the partnership comes in, it allows us to have another avenue to bring people into the city that wouldn't normally come into the city. A lot of what's developing in the, in the electric car world is, you know, the folks that own Teslas, or the Leafs, or the other fully-electric cars, there are, you know, online, you know, route planning software that show them where they can stop for 20 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour, to charge at different points along the country as they're traveling through. So what cities have done is they've installed, you know, solar charging stations, they get routed, they get, you know, put as a destination point on their route from their mapping software, the folks stop, spend an hour or two, or half an hour inside the community while their car charges, and then move on. Notably, what I've seen from, from looking into this is the, a great number of the cities initially go in this direction, offer the electricity for free for a one-year period, just to determine the need and the benefit and the costs, and I've not found a city yet that's gone from, from that initial free electricity model to the charge model because of the economic impact it's brought into their community. And I, and to be clear, I'm not suggesting that, I just wanted to give, you know, some, some concept of the benefit that it brings into the community beyond the electricity sales. And there could be some offset for our costs there, based on that partnership with the city and tourism, or however we structure that. It's also notable that, you know, KU has a similar program, and they're putting, doing a large-scale deployment of electric vehicle charging stations around the state, and also, you know, our little town, our neighbor midway up the street, just put one in in 2016, and they've had, you know, very positive results with it as well. And this would be, I think it would be a dollar amount item, from looking at installation costs, it looks like tier-two chargers are around $6,000 installed, and the midpoint for tier-three chargers is 20, although there are some tier-three installs that are around eight. So my suggestion, I guess my motion would be that we allocate $10,000 as a portion of funding for a cooperative project with the city and tourism, and the other industry agencies in the city, to establish EV car charge station in town.
Do we have a second? I'll second. I think, I had looked at this and thought about it, and kind of the growth in the United States, and when railroad stations came to towns or didn't stop in towns, and whether those towns excelled and grew or failed. And I think that the future of electric cars is, is very good, and is going to replace gas cars in a decade or so, and if we want to be part of this, we want to be on those screens with people that have those types of cars, this would be a good way to get there.
I guess part of the problem I have with this item is it was given to us Friday morning, when we have not had any chance to think about it, to do any research on it, to get any, the numbers you just gave us, Walt, any background on it. I would be more inclined to consider this if it had been given to us, you know, we've been discussing the budget since May, we've had three meetings where we've discussed the budget, this didn't come up in any of the three meetings, and so when we're supposed to vote on a budget tonight, when we have things given to us in the last minute like this, you know, you've talked a lot about due diligence, it, it doesn't give us the opportunity to do that, and, and so that's probably one of the biggest problems I have with this item on the agenda right now.
Well, I can address that a little bit. Sometimes inspiration doesn't happen on the best schedule, and what we're looking at here is allocating some money that we'll be voting on again, but we have to work with, or our goal is to work with a partner on this, and so if no one out there shows any interest, it's going to fail. I did talk to Plaza Hotel, just to ask them, do you ever have customers that ask for a recharge station? And they said, well, that hasn't exactly happened, but they have had customers who they know drive here with electric cars, and of course, they don't have a way to charge them while they're here. So it would be something that would be certainly an asset to the community, and again, we are just noting to the world, or to the ratepayers, that it's part of our budget to look into this, to bring it to reality if we possibly can, in working with partners, kind of like the same approach we took with drinking phones. And here, we have the benefit of actually getting money out of it, because we'd be selling the electricity.
Like I said, I like to, you know, with that, I like to amend my motion, and let's just go ahead and take the dollar round out of it, and change the motion to direct staff to, you know, contact, you know, the city and chamber and tourism, to, you know, give us our report back on their willingness to participate in the installation of a solar char, or EV charging station, and, you know, willingness to share costs.
Sounds like the city, county, tourism, chamber, and FPB need to get together and talk about it.
That's exactly what I'm suggesting.
But I think we're noting it to people that we think this is a serious reality, and we have a budget.
Well, maybe, because a big difference of opinion in this country on whether this plug-in stuff is really going to work, and it's going to be adapted. It's not clear, but I do think we need to try to prepare to get ready if, if it does in fact start going that way. But no, I just, I think that group needs to get together and start looking at this.
Yeah, and I amend my motion to be basically that, so that we, that staff reach out, start that discussion, report back to us on the willingness of, of the city and the tourism and chamber of partnering in a, in a project like that, and, you know, willingness to cost share.
What, are we suggesting it's a little work group and within staff, or not a committee or anything, gets us into a lot of, just, I don't know, can, can staff do something along those lines?
If you ask it, we can do it, okay?
And I guess, you know, that is one of our board things, is to think further, you know, what are the possibilities, so it fits with that. Any further discussion?
Do we have a second to the amendment?
Oh, I'll second the amendment. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, so can you restate the motion with this amendment, please?
Sure. To direct staff to engage with city tourism and the chamber to develop a program for installation of a, of a solar charging station in town, and, or of an electric vehicle charging station in town, and determine, you know, cost sharing.
Okay, but again, there, there's no dollars in this budget.
There's no dollar amount.
And no obligation.
And no obligation, just...
So, we've had a restatement of the motion, we have a second, we have amendment. Kathy, do you want to call this one individually, please?
Uh, Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Baldwin?
Yes.
Member Hale?
Yes.
Member Ludwig?
Yes. So you've got a yes on it.
I thought my name was Rosen there for a second. Yes.
I think the same number of syllable, or, letters.
Yeah, I'll put the initials down.
Okay, so that passed unanimously, thank you, I'm pleased to see that. Okay, number 13, that was my idea, and I am removing that, striking it from the agenda. We'll go on to number 14, cease expenditures of office employee uniforms and amend dress code policy. David, did you want to say anything further about this one? I think it's coming from staff, or if anyone from staff wants to.
Don't want anything to add, we discussed ways to try to save money within the budget, it's just something that's always stood out at me as employees, that we could look to cut $25,000 to $30,000 off the budget by having administrative staff wear name tags, as opposed to, everyone you see here across the front with the FPB logo, these are technically called uniforms, so we get five or six shirts of each different kind and jacket, and, so the idea is just to save money by amending our policy to include name tags that are dollars apiece. So if the board wanted to go back to administrative staff wearing uniforms, the language in the policy does not exclude that, it's just that this, it comes to more of a funding question. Do you want to fund uniforms, or would you, if you don't mind us wearing name tags, that would, that's just kind of where we are.
So, do we have a motion? Okay, so Steve made the motion to cease expenditures of office employee uniforms and amend dress code policy, and I note there that it's office employees opposed to line workers, or people in hazardous areas, any of those things?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Well, this, this is where we really can't save money, and this has always been, you know, this is a big expense, and I know it's controversial and so forth, but I think it's something we should do. Support, I support the motion.
Any further discussion, sounds like not? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion passed. Now we have the big one, the one that I know David Denton is looking forward to. Do we have a motion to approve the 2018-19 fiscal year budget? Okay, so I believe Steve has said he's making a motion.
No, I didn't say I did that, that's part of it.
Oh, oh, okay, well, I wasn't making the motion, I was throwing it out for someone to take a leadership role here.
In making the motion?
Yeah, in making the motion.
Before we get there, would, or, or maybe you can't do it, because it's too Ben Helters Kelters, would you mind to just go over the things that we have added to the budget today?
Sure. One thing that I've make, got a list here, we are going to add $38,000 to the budget that will be spent for Tedesco general manager search, in this current, in the 18-19 year. We're going to add $15,000 for water fountains, $17,500 for board travel, and we have an existing contract to sign with E3 that have funds remaining of around 53, let's just say 5,400. So those are total amendments of $75,900 is the way I understand the additional additions that we need to put in. So it'd be the existing budget you've had since May 24th, plus the additional $75,900.
Do we get the education, board education?
Yeah.
Less 30? I'm not used to that. Nice.
No, it's going to be $38,000.
Less the uniform expense.
$38,000 to finish the Tedesco.
Yes, sir.
$15,000 was for travel.
$15,000 for water fountains, additional three, we'll come back if the change, the cost is more different. Board travel, 17.5.
Okay.
Unspent E3 funds, and then we've got uniform reduction of 25, let's just say 25,000.
How much was the unspent E funds, E3?
$5,344.
There's already $5,000 in there for the board travel, so it's actually an additional 12.5 we're asking, right?
Correct.
Correct. I'm coming up with a total right at 40,000.
Whenever you take off the uniforms, okay.
Yeah.
So with those changes just discussed, looking to close another year of budget discussion.
So that's only 40,000 more then, so that's, that's not bad.
Okay, so, do we have a motion then? Okay, so do we have a motion then?
I'll make the motion to adopt the budget as stated and amended.
Good. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No. Good. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Item number 16, request permission to have chair call a closed session to discuss proposed and pending or pending litigation regarding liquidated damages and tangledwood pursuant to KRS 61.8101C. All in favor?
Did somebody make the motion?
Okay. I just, I requested, so someone has to say.
I'll make the motion.
Go into closed session.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're into closed session. So, good.
Before we do that, I want to again thank David and his staff and everybody who goes through the very tedious, very difficult process of developing our budgets. They all do a superb job running this.
I'll second that.
We got a quorum, let's get out of here.
Move to reconvene.
A second? To reconvene? A second?
Yep.
Okay, we move to second. All in favor?
Aye. Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, move to second.
We'll tell everybody else if they missed the button.
They missed the excitement. We're already in here. Catch it in a minute.